Okay, it's October, I'm sorry, it's October 8th. And the planning board meeting is calls of order. We'll begin with roll call.
Yeah.
Marty Kane.
Greg Copeland.
John Derkindren. Rich Benham.
Chad Ridgeway Planner.
And George's Planning Board Secretary.
Tonight's agenda will be approval of the minutes for October 11th and approval of the minutes for October 25th. Second item on the agenda is land use ordinance revision workshop. And we have three items under that. Farm retail operations is the first item, discussion of agritourism as a substitute or adjunct to the retail farming provisions. Item two, site plan and conditional use approval procedures. Item three, downtown business district discussion, primarily signage design. Item four, I'm sorry, there are four items, administrative action, and that is to establish some routine hours. We have problems with unpredictable hours, so hopefully we can do some of that. Then we have planners' reports, item three on the agenda, public comment is item four. So we will begin with the minutes, minutes for October 11th.
I believe that on the October 11th meeting we do have a quorum.
We only have three, right?
I was happy on that day.
So we may pick up another member or two later. We might be able to do that at the end of the meeting, but right now we don't have a quorum for October 11th. October 25th.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to accept the minutes of October 25th.
Second? Move to accept as written, seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Yeah.
Veteran animals, okay? We will move on now to discussion of farm retail operation, specifically considering agritourism as a substitute or adjunct to the retail farming provisions. And I don't know, Chad, if you have an introduction clause on this?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to first speak about the agritourism facet, because that was something that I had suggested that we look at, is perhaps we needed to come up with a new definition that was more encompassing than retail, you know, farm retail. And in researching agribusiness, or agritourism I should say, I found that agritourism is a totally different animal. In fact, and it's something we may want to consider, but agritourism is actually hands-on experience in farming.
As opposed to ecotourism, which is what was mentioned at the last meeting, right?
Well, we did mention agritourism, but we were thinking of that was more encompassing, it involved a lot of different things, but agritourism is a bigger animal than what we were originally contemplating. Agritourism, and it's something that we may want to contemplate on a larger scale, but it's taking advantage like ecotourism, only in terms of agriculture. And usually means opportunities for hands-on experience, milking cows, mowing, baling hay, which is always fun, if you've ever done that, especially slinging bales in the middle of the summer. Feeding horses, exercising animals, being part of the farm, is essentially what, and in various levels, providing almost sort of like a dude ranch kind of experience, only instead of horses or instead of ecological tours, it's actually more just experiencing what it's like to be in a farm-like atmosphere or a farm environment. And I'm not saying that that's not necessarily something we should explore, but in looking at it, especially in Gloucester where we have one of the bigger agritourism draws in the state, which is Pine Land Farms, that's a very highly developed system they have in there of actually participating in the farming experience, including lodging, including tours, and being part of crew, crews that go out and do things. And they're exploring that, they're developing that as they try to redefine agritourism up there. And so they have a pretty well-developed program, and I'm not sure that's really going. We're trying to get a better handle on how to expand or to limit farm retailers we currently have written in, and include more smaller businesses that we have in the town, like Elmo's Lamas.
Agritourism, the way you're describing it anyway, doesn't sound like it would be feasible for small farm operations. So, and that's really what we're looking at here. And, you know, out of small farm operation, I don't see why it wouldn't be possible, except I don't think anyone could afford the insurance that would go with it, because farming is a relative, generally anyway, relatively dangerous. So, I would tend to agree with you that agritourism wouldn't fit with what we were trying to do as far as our farming, retail farming definition is concerned. Did you want to add anything to that?
Well, the only thing I would add to that is the only other possibility, I would agree with Mr. Chairman about the insurance, the realities of insurance and other logistics, financial issues, but if somebody wanted to develop an agritourism business, that's something that we should contemplate, whether or not we would want to either prepare for such a business, or to wait and do as we, you had discussed before, prepare to make changes when the proposal was made to us, make changes to the ordinance to accommodate that, which is what happened with Kate.
Question, since we have a terminology in effect, or discussing it, why not submit terminology? Because if you don't have a definition, it's not allowed.
That's correct, unless we change the ordinance.
But have a definition at least, because we're not specifically saying anywhere, but if you have a definition, it's still allowed.
So you're proposing a definition to be considered for the next revision, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, so I mean, at least it has a definition, because of what we have run into in the past, if there's no definition, it's not allowed, then it's put on the back burner for another year, or until another change is in effect, yet we turn out to have the terminology at least there.
It's not just the definition though, because we also have to assign it to various zones. Greg?
I agree with him that we need a definition on it, but I don't think that we should define it as agritourism, we should leave that one for what it really is, so that there's no confusion down the road later. I think we should come up with a definition or a title on it.
You're talking about retail farming?
The type of thing that we're looking for.
Right, yeah, right, the two separate things.
Right.
Yeah, I don't think it makes any sense for us to define agritourism for the purposes of the ordinance, if it's not allowed in any zone.
Yeah, but we would have to...
We're going to spin our wheels and come up with a definition, so that maybe at some point in the future, somebody might think that they want to do this. I'm sorry, but that's a waste of all of our time. If somebody wants to do it, then they can come and we can work the details out at that one. I think for Ms. Drew's purpose, I think farm retail works fine. I think the problem is that she's in the R1 zone, and it's not allowed in R1 or R2. The definition seemed, I think, would work fine. I could be wrong, but I think the problem is that she's in the R1 zone. And honestly, I don't think that it should be allowed in the R1 zone. I think, I don't think any business should be allowed in the R1 zone. I wouldn't have a problem if it were in the R2, and we worked at changing the zone that she is in. Her zone makes no sense to be in R1. Those are huge pieces of land down there.
Well, it makes sense in the context of what this board has been trying to do, which is kind of engineering all of this development to go to certain places, but practically speaking, I agree, it makes no sense for it to be there. If you're wishing for, you know, dense population there, and that's the way you're going to try to get it, it makes sense only in that context.
When you think in the context of what is actually there, which our farmers want, that resuming that to, say, an R2, and then, say, amending the ordinance so that it would allow farm retail in the R2 zone, would make more sense, and it would be an easier fix.
Question would be, if you were in R1, normally lot sizes in R1 is one acre, correct? Am I wrong?
Minimum, yeah.
Minimum. If you have, we'll say, four and a half, five, like in this case, okay, so that means a budding, nobody's going to turn around and be right close to you, okay? The fact is, it's possibly because it's a larger size in the R1 acreage-wise for this purpose. Again, that's what I'm asking, so you tell me what I can do with my land, or vice versa.
You're suggesting a different way to get there, other than change the zone, allow it in the zone, as long as you have larger acreage?
You're correct.
Or large enough?
Correct.
Greg?
Yeah, I would agree that, I think that it could stay in the R1 if it was to be, like, we have this, tonight's sheet here, Division 2.0, something with minimum lot size, minimums that fast. I think that would work. It would still allow down the road for her property, if she decides to sell it, for somebody to sell it and break it up into smaller lots and sell them off as residential. Of course, that would give up the farm retail, but as long as the people have the room to do farm retail, we're growing community, and that'll take the seams out of it, will fit, then, you know.
But I would make the point that I have six acres of land. It's one acre wide and six acres deep. Literally, that's the size of my lot. Well, based on this, I could put farm retail there. It would impact my acreage.
And I think we can put a road frontage into this table as well.
You've got plenty of road frontage.
Remember, we had two different issues last time. We had, we were concerned about the traffic that this might generate in the neighborhood, and we were concerned about setbacks, so let's keep those in mind as we talk.
I know, but I'm going to make a point order here, is twice I've gone to speak and twice you've talked over me. I apologize. And I would like to, I would like to have the opportunity to finish my thoughts when I bring them up. Thank you.
Okay.
The other thing is, also, a budding across the street has acreage, and it helps with the blueberries. And that should also be allowed, because they have the acreage. This is generally speaking, adjacent to this property of hers. So I mean, this is actually not just for one, but it's for more than one.
Well, is the blueberry...
It's agricultural.
Yeah, is that R1 right at the moment? Is that R1 at the moment?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean...
There's no difference there.
No, that's what I'm saying, yes.
To get back to one of the points that I was making, we do have this proposed bulk requirement in front of us. There could be a road frontage, and it doesn't have to be blunt, you say, you're one acre wide by six, so you're 208 feet wide, you can make the requirement 500 feet of frontage in order to do this as well. You could make it 400 feet. We could make it whatever is reasonable. We're not tied to just a lot, a minimum lot size, we can add other requirements.
But the question is, is frontage a critical measurement, or setback, or is total bulk, or all of them? Personally, I don't know what frontage has to do with it. I don't know that it has, you know, except for a minimum amount for a driveway or something like that. I don't see where it has an impact on the effect to the abudders and to the zone. The others may feel differently.
I think the point that was brought up a couple of weeks ago, and it was touched on a moment ago, was that the distance between the pharmacy and, or the farm retail, and the abutting neighbors, the distance between, that's why frontage would be, could be part of the whole solution, is you wouldn't want them too close, so that you wouldn't have cars coming in and out all the time on residential area.
Okay, yeah, you're envisioning it being up on the road as a stand, and I was envisioning it being set back, because there's more bulk, so I guess there is a possibility of things being too close. Did you have a comment?
Yeah, the other thing is too, if you turn, as Greg was saying, turn your distance that way, okay, you're not approaching upon your neighbor, for one, and they also, two, you turn out having the idea of your area of your site distance or everything else, so you have more of a safety issue.
Okay. I'm still not convinced that in the R1 zone it's allowed. I think R1 should be strictly residential, period. I don't think there should be any business allowed. I know that we have businesses in the R1. I know that we have home occupations in the R1. I don't think we should be having some kind of a commercial establishment in the R1 zone.
That I'm going to do here before we change the rules.
That's true, but that doesn't mean we need to change the rules now to allow them.
And I think we need to look at comprehensive plan there as well.
Comprehensive plan, as you've heard in speaking, you don't want any business, except in positive business district, that's it.
Right, but we are bound to follow the comprehensive plan, that's...
Those are our guidelines, and we aren't necessarily following. I don't want to open that camera itself.
Yeah, it is, well, I mean, the comprehensive plan does specify certain uses for the R1, and certain conclusions for the R1. And I think until that comprehensive plan gets changed, if it gets changed, we're bound to go along with that, with the concept, you know, there's following and going along with the concept, but if you're talking about putting businesses and farms in R1, that is, that is very contrary to the comprehensive plan.
That's one reason I would think we might want to look at zoning from an R1 to an R2.
Well, no, I don't, I didn't bring it easy, but we wanted to gather around and take a look at the R1 districts that we're talking about. You really truly have, gentlemen, a, sorry, thank you. We have two R1 districts, and they're distinctly different. And notice the one that's really centered on New Road and Clearview Acres, up here in the, in the western, more western Brooklyn town, that is dense development, very small lots, one acre lots, and in some cases, less, along New Road, and of course, we remember the Clearview Estates, and that was a cluster subdivision. So that's a very distinct area that really looks like that would have a difficult time accommodating a farm retail, without having some impacts on the residential character of the neighborhood. If we go over to the second R1, which is along essentially Limerick Road, it's really a corridor along Limerick Road, it backs up significantly into a lot of undeveloped land or sparsely developed land behind Limerick Road, between Limerick Road and Portland Road, but really, along Limerick Road, you see very large lots. You see some lots that might be rendered non-conforming if we were to go to an R2. I'm wondering if we, there are a number of ways that we could ensure that these would not sprout up, let's say, in Talbot Woods, or in any other subdivision, or on a small road that's off of one of these subdivisions, which is, I think, is the concern, part of the concern, traffic impacts, part of the concern about site distances and turning movements, part of the concern about impacting the residential character and the quality of life in the neighborhood, so that people can enjoy the residential property, which is one of your greatest concerns. Maybe it's a combination of things, including, let's say, even larger than five acre lot sizes, setbacks to existing residential districts, residential buildings, and frontage on an arterial. You have to have a frontage on an arterial, to mean you have to be on Limerick Road.
Question, Kate's turn on River Road, you are one down on River Road.
Yep, but River Road is in the R4 district.
Not all of it.
Yes, but the one you're talking about, I believe, is in the R4 district, is it R3 or R4, the permitted one that is...
Yeah, well, I thought, no, what I'm going at, okay, you have some of the, not looking at that exactly, but I'd say, we have some of your horse farms.
Yeah.
Okay, Vinegar Hill.
Yeah.
That is in R1.
No, that's R2.
That's R2.
Or R4.
Vinegar Hill is R2, and that's permitted.
Okay, that's why I thought it was R1, down that down where I was, okay, just Vinegar Hill.
Yeah.
Supposed to be R1.
No, that was, I think that was changed in the 2005 comp plan, Marty. I think that is now all R2 down there. Everything behind, everything essentially behind the Route 1 CCS district along Portland Road, everything behind it is R2, pretty much until you start getting to the BI district, and then everything behind it is, or to the east of it, is all R3 and R4.
Because I remember they were trying to put R1 into there, and that's why I'm saying that.
They're probably trying to make those, some of the, some of the small, really small lots that historically have been around Vinegar Hill, that are really small, probably make them, make them conforming, because some of those lots are half acres.
Because I remember back in 75, 78, minimum lot size at the time, was supposed to be two acres, okay? Even though that some of the budding neighbors or anything else are like a half to three-quarters of acres. If I turn on your depth...
Getting back to our discussion here, though, what were you suggesting here, Chad? Were you suggesting a modification to R1, or were you suggesting changing the boundaries of R1?
I think I was, I was, I'm not sure I want to play around with the boundaries of R1 right now. I was thinking more of putting more standards on farm retail, and one of the standards saying that to prevent proliferation in back neighborhoods like up in here, which I think one of the things Rich is really concerned about, is in this area, we got denser neighborhoods.
Well, it's any of the, any of the residential neighborhoods.
Right. What, dealing with, instead of going just with zones, dealing with lot size and ensuring that it's on an arterial, ensuring then, as an arterial, you already have the traffic going back and forth. Having turning movements can affect the service level of the arterial, but the fact is, you won't have all this traffic going on very, very local residential streets, like up in Marty. Let's say Marty had a five acre parcel, and then he went on Pine Street, and he wants to put in a farm retail, that's really not an appropriate location, is, it's really not a good one. First of all, it's suicide from a business standpoint, unless you're a real destination, because he has no visibility from one of the main arteries, but, and I think you'll always find that most people would want to put it in an artery, just for that visibility sake. But if you were led into that, just saying, it's going to be, it has to be on an artery, that would eliminate, New Road might be an artery.
The argument that I would have, I mean, if we put in, it has to be on an arterial road, and it has to have 500 feet of frontage, we're restricting it to a specific spot in town anyway, in terms of where it's going to go. It would make, to me, and it's just me, I think we would just, it would make more sense to re-district, I don't know what this is.
That's the, it's at Mobile Home Park.
Then just come straight back and across, and make that whole section R1, and rezone that to R2. Because this is Talbot Woods and all in that area, that's going to stay in residential quality anyway, and if we, if we just brought it down in this little section here, to an R2, these houses aren't going to change, they're going to stay in the R1, they're going to stay residential for the most part, but you're going to solve the problem with Ms. Drew and the blueberry farm across the street, and there's going to be enough space if somebody else wanted to put in a lava farm.
Well, the other, the other thing is, there's also other people along that section there, okay? You had, with the large section, or anything else that's under tree farm, or anything else, you have Bert Cowgill, okay, then you also had the horse farm, which is right there.
But would they, would they have enough frontage to be able to put 500 feet? I'm looking at this guy that's back here in the R4, he must have all of 10 feet on Limerick Road, and it's a long driveway coming back to his property. R4 allows it, but because he's in the R1, he'd never be able to put it in back on his property.
Well, he'd be able to put it in on the R4 portion of the property. He'd be able to have a sign up front.
No, because we're talking about restricting the frontage to an arterial road of 500 feet, he'd never be able to put one in.
No, we're talking about in an R1 zone, not in all these zones. And my understanding is we're talking about this R, in an R1 zone, because currently they're allowed in an R2, R3, and an R4.
They're not allowed in the R2.
Yeah, they are. It was one mistake.
Oh, it is your mistake, okay. Then I, I think the easiest solution is to just change that section to an R2.
So your suggestion is redraw the zone?
Is redraw the zone. Take that little section from just past Camp Brown Road down to the CCS district, and turn it into an R2 zone, and that allows her to have her farm retail.
Well, again, we're not working for a specific person.
That's true, but it allows farm retail in that area.
We're looking at a change that makes sense for the region.
Concerned about if there's any one acre lots in here that would be made non-conforming with such a rezone, and what they might have on the comp plan.
Question.
Well, if you, if you, hold on just a second, if you maintain an R1 in this general area, so if you redraw the lines of that, that would still conform to the comp plan, because comp plan wants to increase the density there, looking for a town center there.
Where?
Where that R1 zone is right now, that was the whole reason for it, so that you would accumulate that village center thing. But go ahead, Marty, and then I'll get to you there.
Sure, you come from Mark Welch's on that side of the road, forward, all the way up to Strickland's on that side. You have acreage, generally speaking, of, and it's agricultural, besides Mark, agricultural use on that side of the road. On the other side of the road, from Riverside, going towards Route 1, minusing one property there, all the way up to where Mr. Cowgill's is, okay, you have acreage there. So I mean, you have a good section, so it will not affect or impact residents.
Greg?
I understand what Rich is saying about making that an R2 or an R4 zone, or, but I think if we keep it in our zone, and we use, has to be on an arterial as a condition, then we get to capture those later, when somebody divides those, and we get to keep them as R1s later. It's, the way things are, is that properties along main roads become subdivisions real quick these days, and it's only a matter of time that properties are going to turn from open areas to subdivisions, and they'll be smaller lots, and they'll fit in with an R1 zone real well. And I think keeping it R1 right now, and using the arterial condition allows, gives us the best of both worlds.
Explain what do you mean by the best of both worlds?
Well, is that, right now, those are big lots, they're not R1 sized lots.
Right.
They're huge lots. There's farms out there, the blueberry farm, the tree farms, there's nothing to say that somebody's not going to come along and buy that blueberry farm and want to cut that down into...
House lots.
House lots. And if we keep them as an R1 lot down the road, when they're subdivided, they're R1, they have to stay the smaller lot size.
they have to stay the smaller lot size.
Yeah, but that's a detriment to the town.
I don't think it's a detriment to the town.
Absolutely, it costs more for small lots than large lots, there's a higher cost to the town. The more residential lots you get, the more residents you get in town, the more the cost is to the town.
That may be true, but we have earmarked that section of town for more residential area, smaller lots. So allowing farm stands on large parcels, as long as they meet certain conditions, still allow them to be R1 lots later down the road.
I would argue that, I actually agree with you to an extent about the subdivision, but if you end up doing a clustered subdivision, you're going to end up with a lot of open space out there anyway. And you're going to end up with all of your houses on a cul-de-sac where they, where they might all end up on one acre lots, and you still end up with a couple of acres of open space. And it will still end up fulfilling the two acre requirement in an R2 zone.
Okay, well, any other comments on that?
My greatest concern about going to R2, I mean, I'm not overly, given soil conditions, that I'd much rather have two acre lots out there, quite frankly, because you have shallow, there are limiting conditions out there. It's floating, essentially. And I think if you remember when we were dealing with the subdivision, that was, that we walked the raw land, I think it was two springs ago, it was soaking wet. Conditions, we have perch water table all through there, and so I'm not overly concerned about the R2. I'd rather have more opportunity, more land in which to deal with a reserve septic system, given how lousy soil conditions out there. And I think this was driven, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Chairman, but I think this was driven more by looking at the town from a development standpoint when you made the R1s and R2s, it wasn't really driven as much by soil conditions or other limiting factors.
Comprehensive plan took nothing into consideration.
Right, it looks that way.
There was nothing, it was just like, oh, here we are, let's make this a growth area.
Well, that's, then that's not necessarily bad planning.
But the planning has not soiled.
Because there's lots of arterial, there's good circulation, there's excellent circulation in there, which is one of the concerns, and linkages to services is very good. The problem is, of course, depth of water table is the biggest limiting factor. But at the same time, and I just made an argument for going to R2, and I'm going to do what you accused me of last time, defeating my argument. At the same time, if you look at that map, my greatest concern with going to R2 is that we have, especially on West Lane and several other lanes in there, we have existing one acre lots. That will render those lots non-conforming. That reduces the valuation of that lot. It makes it a little bit more difficult for people to get financing for that, especially in this current banking climate. To take a whole bunch of lots and make them non-conforming, I think is, we would run into a little bit of resistance from, first of all, the homeowners, and second of all, the neighborhood, who may have made estate planning decisions based on a one acre lot zoning. That's not to say that you're necessarily required to meet their needs, but at the same time, people have made decisions based on the zoning here, and I'm not sure that just for the sake of farm retail, we should be changing this just for the sake of farm retail. I think that's, that might be a difficult reason for changing the zone, we'd have a difficult time selling that to, first of all, landowners, second of all, to the public general.
Yes.
But I would, I would argue that we have just gone through the entire downtown Business District 1, where we have said we are going to grandfather existing businesses so that they are not non-conforming. They will become conforming uses within that zone because they already exist. There's nothing that says that we can't do this to the single acre lot houses. We're going to rezone this, but if you have a one acre lot currently, you will be considered, I can't think of the term, I just pulled a blank, conforming, thank you. You will be a conforming lot, and it will not have a detrimental effect on your property value.
The thing is, as you're playing with the crystal ball of estates or anything else, majority of the landowners who are there, okay, own, had for years, didn't consider housing or anything else, because prior to that, Mrs. Drew there, there, it was Kesar's property, okay, and he still had immense areas in there, okay? Even though she was in real estate, and her husband was into landscaping. So, I mean, nobody was playing with crystal ball of changing it to R1, because beforehand, it was more than our, the acreage was, the zone was something else. It wasn't always R1.
Right, and the zone probably, Mr. Chairman, the zone probably was a larger acreage, it was probably a, it required more acres than it currently does now.
I believe it was three acres over there at that time.
So this is an advantage for property, because now suddenly they have much more developable land, and that increases the value of their property, and we should probably, we didn't run into any resistance on that. But if I may, I'd like to respond to what Rich said, because it was an important point. And I appreciate what he was saying about rendering people conforming, or declaring that they'll be conforming. And I think that works okay with uses, but I don't think it applies to space and bulk. When it comes down to minimum lot sizes, I don't think space and bulk applies. And you're non-conforming because you don't have one acre, you don't have two acres of land, you have a non-conforming lot regardless of how many apologies the planning board makes. And that's, that's my, that's my concern, Mr. Chairman, is that I'm very concerned about rendering currently conforming lots non-conforming, when, especially when there might be some other mechanisms that we could use that, I agree, are much more acrobatic and more difficult to manage, and not the right combination to achieve what you achieve much easier in your R2 district. But if we do five acre zoning for this particular use, or even 10 acre, I believe your 10 acres, right? Eighteen, 10 acres, I believe, be lesser, 30 acres. But let's say it's 10 acres, I mean, that's going to do better than an R2. That's going to ensure that, if this is a limited, number one, a limited kind of use, and we're not going to have wall-to-wall farm stands or farm retails, number one. Number two, it's also going to eliminate a lot of lots, especially in the R1 northern section or western section that you're very concerned about legitimately. And frankly, I'll take care of the Talbot Woods area, except for that area that's right across the street in Marilyn Young's large apartment. I think that's the only large parcel in that area that still remains undeveloped, that would be on the artery. So if you, I think lot size setbacks from existing residential might be able to, and location on an arterial, might achieve even more than you can achieve with designated R2.
So if I can summarize at this point, I think we have two options on the table. One is to rezone a portion of R1 to R2 to allow for this kind of use in areas where it seems appropriate, and that has problems. The other is to allow this use, provided there are certain requirements, like acreage and setbacks and such, allowing that in R1, and as I see that, it has problems. I think we have to be doing a very careful reading of the comprehensive plan to see if that conforms to the comprehensive plan. I'd like to throw another possibility into the mix, and that is to do either a completely new zone or a hybrid zone that would allow for this kind of use. So that we, for instance, a hybrid zone would take care of the possibility that you talked about. So maybe the hybrid zone would allow lot size down to one acre, but also allow for these larger uses provided the acreage is there. Now, I haven't really thought that through in terms of how that would fit in there, and if that would be fair to the other areas in R1. It probably would if we have large bulk requirements. So what do you think about that possibility?
Thinking of something like an overlay zone?
No, just a, either, let's call it, you know, an R1A or something like that, or yeah, A for agriculture, where it's still R1, it still has all of the requirements of R1 and all of the, you know, lot size, minimum lot sizes, but it does allow for additional uses provided the setbacks and acreage are available. No comments?
I, again, keep it simple, because everybody decided with great comprehensive plan, tried to change all the names around of all the different zones, just to keep everybody more confused. I like the idea of allowing the usage and everything else, thank you, I own the property, instead of trying to tell me what I can do, what I can't do. But, I mean, if you start creating new names for everything else, it's like, it was HC1, HC2. Now we have six names up there, I don't know what?
Okay, so you're not in favor of a new zone, is that what you're saying?
I don't know, I mean, it's, you start changing name zones and everything else, and.
It does make it more confusing, I agree. Any other comments?
I'm in favor of keeping it the way it is and using requirements, meaning minimum requirements.
Yeah, I'm intrigued, what else would you want to do in that zone? You don't want to do it just for one use.
Well.
I mean, we had played before, and we had discussed before, and really pondered, you know, how far up to run, you know, the DB1 district and DB2 districts up on Lomond Grove.
Right.
And we were concerned about intensity of use, given the primarily residential character after, well, especially after Strickland Lane. It's very residential through that area from Dagton to Strickland Lane. It's relatively dense residential properties there. And we were kind of pushing it by pushing it all the way up to Strickland Lane. I guess my question would be, did you want to continue with looking at Lomond Grove as a mixed-use district of low intensity of some sort? Or is this strictly only for farm retail? And if it's for farm retail only, I'm not sure that's, that's as effective as doing with Greg had mentioned, of just making, you know, making a conditional use, provided you meet these physical standards. But if you had something else in mind, that would make the zone more, not more powerful, but more justified.
What, the only reason I propose that is it would solve the two problems, well, the problems that we had expressed for each of the other solutions. So you would not have the conflict with the comprehensive plan, and you would not have the possible problems associated with smaller lots that would now be non-conforming. So that was the reason that I proposed that.
Question.
Yeah.
That's interrupted.
Sorry.
Okay, but the fact is, if we turn and rezone it, which I don't like the name of it anyway, but like I said, it's not in the comprehensive plan, so it's not against comprehensive plan.
The comprehensive plan.
No, it's not, that zone is not in the comprehensive plan.
Right, right, it does not specify.
It does not exist in the comprehensive plan.
Right, so I'm not sure what you're saying, though. The comprehensive plan identifies regions of the town and specifies uses, and then we said, well, that region's going to be called R1, and we set the, as a planning board, we set the boundaries. So what is it that you're saying, though?
Well, okay, you call it RR1 instead of R1, you call it RR1. By the guidelines of what Greg was saying, okay? The terminology RR1 is not in the comprehensive plan.
Right.
So it doesn't have jurisdiction over it, comprehensive plan, because it's not there.
I think we've violated that rule already with some of the districts we've contemplated, but we haven't violated the concept behind it. I would agree with you, Marty, that that name is not in there, but I don't think that necessarily, it does.
It's like playing with your crystal ball, who knows what's going to happen in five years from now?
Well, that's true, that's why we, that's why we, I'm like, what you're asking, you're basically saying we can't change it because.
Can't.
The comprehensive, the comprehensive plan says, does not have that district in there.
We can't change it because they don't, the comprehensive plan won't have jurisdiction over it.
Well, but the comprehensive plan doesn't have R1 in it either.
Yes, it does.
No, the comprehensive plan.
Because it definitely defined where all businesses would be.
Yeah, but it doesn't.
The comprehensive plan defines it.
The comprehensive plan says that there are no businesses in the R1.
It gives.
This wouldn't be R1.
Actually, Marty brought up a point, I believe the comprehensive plan, if I recall, I don't have it with me at the moment, I apologize. But I believe that actually does set some boundaries, some rough boundaries for that zone. So that would limit creating a new zone, which might not be possible.
But I think, backtracking, I think Marty's actually being, well, forgive me if I say this, Marty's being all facetious here, because essentially.
Didn't need that, yeah, go ahead, continue.
What he's saying is, what we want to do is fulfill the intent of the comprehensive plan, to meet the goals of the comprehensive plan, change some of the tools or some of the districts to achieve those goals, but not fundamentally change the intent or the target objectives of that plan. This area down here is a growth area. It is supposed to be the area in which we channel residential growth in the future, until we amend the comprehensive plan, which we won't have to do by 2015.
But does that mean?
But in what we're doing now, I don't believe we're affecting that at all. Even if we were to make a subzone that John's talking about, I don't believe that that is necessarily in conflict with that, except for what Rich is saying, that is an introduction of non-residential use in a high-growth residential area. That's a fundamental question, I guess, we're going to ask, which we'll get right now.
So, I like Greg's idea. One of the problems that we keep running into is how we're going to pull the comprehensive plan, right? Why are we not working on doing an update of the comprehensive plan?
Because we have to be done for another three years.
But it seems to need it, yeah, but it doesn't mean that you have to wait until the next redo.
Could I introduce you, I can't say it, that might have been filmed. I was going to introduce you to the Board of Selectmen and ask you, aren't they the people that are supposed to be?
Well, we could make a recommendation, and maybe the Board would consider that, because it's a problem we've been having all this time, just trying to conform to the comprehensive plan.
But isn't it also our duty to try to help our citizens of the town to be prosper and happy as with?
No, actually, that's not our duty, our duty is to.
To repay any assets that control everybody?
No, our duty is to enforce the ordinance, and do that.
Just said.
Interpret and enforce the ord, well, not even enforce, interpret the ordinance. And the ordinance is, you know, that goes through town meeting and all of that. So we try to accommodate people as much as possible, but we have to conform to the ordinance.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'm not suggesting that we cut off any discussion on this, but I, even though we have a quorum here tonight, I would still like to hear the opinions of the rest of the board members on this subject. I think it's a good subject for debate by all of us. I'm more than willing to keep up the discussion on it tonight, but I think we shouldn't hold off any decisions until we have a full board.
Yeah, I agree with that, I don't think we're doing any decisions. Yeah, I, I agree with that, I don't think we're doing any decisions tonight, but...
I just want to say that before somebody pops something in front of us and...
I don't, I don't think we have enough information, we have enough ground at the moment to make any decisions, but...
I was about to make a motion.
Yes, yes, you can move all you want.
I know, and I have no authority. Mr. Chairman, if I may just bring this up, because I, I think this is really important. Both of you are right, Mr. Kane was right, and you are right in that there, it does specify areas, it does specify intent, but it's not as, as finely tuned as our ordinance is.
Correct.
And what this says, and this could be interesting, and this, this might ease, I guess it's a matter of interpretation, but it says, "The areas designated as urban residential, which are R1, the high-growth areas, are intended to create the potential for development of two mixed-use villages that will provide more pedestrian-oriented, somewhat higher-density residential neighborhoods. The residential uses allowed will be similar to those allowed in the suburban residential, which is the R2, and would include provisions for housing for the elderly and elder care, bless you, recreational facilities and small-scale, low-intensity home businesses, but will exclude uses that generate significant traffic noise or similar external impacts. Small-scale agricultural and natural resources uses will be allowed in these areas."
That answers the question, right Ted?
Well, I think it, it gives some credence to it.
Yeah.
And it's, it goes into village standards and overlay provisions.
So then, then the question really that we have to answer is, what is small scale?
Well, I, I think the question we have to answer is not only what is small scale, but does, that small-scale agricultural, how do you fit retail into small-scale agricultural other than a farm stand?
Right, because we're, we're, we're marrying...
We're talking about putting a retail business agriculture.
The other thing is, we discuss size of the garage, or the size of your, your, farm stand is usually at the road, okay? Now, are you going to call, call this farm-related garage under a thousand feet or under fifteen-hundred feet for products and wares?
Well, that, that's what we would have to decide, what is, what is small and does small, you know, at what point does it go from being a small agricultural use to being a small retail? There, and there is a difference, there's a difference between having a farm stand where you're selling the, the fruits and the vegetables and, and the milk and the eggs and the products that you raise on that farm, to having a building where you're bringing in other materials to have in it, it's not, I don't view those as being the same situation.
Question for you, farm retail, okay, is seasonal, generally speaking, generally speaking, because you aren't going to be standing, you aren't going to be standing at the side of the road selling milk in the wintertime.
Marty, that's a farm stand, that you won't be standing at the side of the road. Farm retail is a, is a commercial location where people are coming in to buy the stuff from the farm.
Okay, I stand corrected.
And that's, where do we, what's the difference, where do we draw the line?
Harris Farms, they sell milk all the way around.
Is it, is it, is it size, if so, what size?
Right.
I mean, that, to me, it sounds as if it's an allowed use, we just have to define how that use fits in, in what is small, what is, what is too small, what is too big.
Okay, here, let me ask you this question then, okay, size of the property. No, 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 just, I'm using to say the size of the property, okay? If you have anything under two thousand square feet, which is the average size of a house.
That's a big house, Marty.
That's a big house.
What size, what, what's a thirty, thirty by, what's a ranch, square footage?
Nine hundred and sixteen, twenty-eight by forty.
Let's say thousand.
Thousand.
Thousand square feet.
Okay, so you have anything under a thousand, which would be the same thing as having out of your house, I'm using that as a guideline.
Yeah, I, that could be the guideline that we come up with. I'm, I'm saying we have to come up, we would have to answer the question of what, what do we consider small?
Ted, if you could read that again, because I don't have a right of...
Oh, I'm sorry.
In terms of, what does it say about small business retails, it says home occupation?
Yeah, it says, "Non-residential uses," we're, we're looking at, at businesses that fit into a high-density neighborhood, I mean, the intent is to make that a high-density neighborhood, that's the one acre, and businesses that would fit into that, non-residential uses that would be limited to community and governmental uses, non-motorized recreational facilities, so no go, go-kart drives.
He could have, he could have horses, he could ride the llamas.
Yeah, small-scale, I don't think you'd want to do that.
Not looking like you'd...
Small-scale...
I don't think they want you to do that.
Small-scale, low-intensity home businesses. I don't know a home business, business, small-scale, low-intensity, but, okay, "but will exclude uses that generate significant traffic noise and similar external impacts." Small-scale agricultural and natural resource uses will be allowed in these areas.
Well, and I think the fact that it addresses a home business, and I, I think in terms of a business connected to a home, sort of like what we do with Kate's butter, where we have to have the owner live on the premises, you know, that kind of thing.
That's a heck of a bit, home occupation.
Well, not a home occupation, but a home business, I think there's a difference, but the reason, what we're proposing here, I mean, the, the concept is to have a farm of some type and sell products which are related to that farm, not necessarily from that farm, but it would be all there on the same place. It's not an isolated business where somebody shows up and goes home at the end of the day.
And you could make owner occupation part of that if you wanted to.
I think we'd have to.
Although in some situations that might be difficult, but...
If, I, I would...
I will tell you why, I'll, I will tell you that if we look at, at the Wentworth's farm, that's a perfect example of product that's being raised there, being sold as community agricultural, where it's contract farming essentially, and the excess is being sold retail, that's what they want to do, they don't live on the site. The farm is there.
Then they don't have a farm retail on that site. Very simple such, solution, farm retail, you have a house there, and if you're not living there, then you don't have farm retail. Because if we, if we do not mandate home occupation, then I'm going to go put a butcher shop, I'm going to move off my property, and I'm going to put a butcher shop there, and there's nothing anyone can do about it.
They certainly can't, because...
All I have to do is raise a couple of cows.
Uh, no, you guys do more than that, because remember what the definition is, it's a per, a farm retail is a permanent structure used to store, display, and sell agricultural and animal husbandry products produced on the site.
Yeah, I'm going to raise some cows.
And other lands farmed by the principal owner, prepared packaged foods, baked goods, handicrafts, Christmas trees and wreaths, agricultural land implements, and, hand implements, my mistake, and supplies manufactured, and that's, I'm sure we don't get a John Deere or, you know, not dealership, and supplies manufactured by non-owner producers are permitted as a secondary seasonal use in the farm retail operation. So you're still going to have to basically produce, your primary uses, you're selling your own wares.
Which they are.
Which they are, and we have a little clarification of that, even though they, they've explained, and they're not alone, that they wholesale bundle their stuff all together, and they want to sell the products that may, that may not even come from the same manufacturer, but the, the fact is, these are the products, we produce the wholesale stuff, and these are the products that come out of it, not necessarily our role. And, you know, frankly speaking, if you were to do a blue, a cranberry, a cranberry bog, and you were to have a stand there and sell cranberry juices and so forth, I mean, not necessarily be all yours, it'd be from a co-op. If they were low-moist blueberry, it would be the same sort of thing.
And I, I don't have a problem with that, as long as you're living on the premises.
Well, we don't have that definition here right now.
It's a, I, I think the comp plan tells us that that's the definition.
Going back to the, the Wentworth's farm, does that fall under farm retail at the moment, right? Because that's our current definition.
Yeah, it falls under farm retail.
So we have to be careful, but that definition is already being applied in other places, so...
But it follows what they're using, because they're creating product, growing product, they're growing product on that, that land.
Right, but Richard is suggesting that we have to have a home or, a home, no, an owner occupy the premises.
I'm, I'm suggesting, let me, I'm suggesting that it's owner occupied if it's going to be in the R1 zone, that's what I'm suggesting.
In your...
If it's in the R1 zone, it's owner, if you're in R3 or R4, okay, fine, whatever floats your boat out there, you've got more than enough land, and, and if you can do that, okay, but in the R1, which is strictly small residential development land, if you're going to have farm retail, you have to live on site.
How's that sound?
With...
Well, it's not...
With, you aren't, you aren't necessarily saying with one acre, again, you can specify with five acres or more.
We could, yes.
I mean, that way it's taking the one acre and creating it to this...
It's in the R1 zone, Marty, I don't care how many acres there are, it's in the R1 zone, it's going to end up on, with a home occupation. We can say that you have to have five acres of land, but to have farm retail in the R1 zone, you have to have home, owner occupied.
Right, you're concerned, if I'm being misinterpreted, you're concerned basically that somebody wouldn't just buy a piece of land and use it, let's say Maxwell Farm, for instance, decides they want to branch down into a rental, they put up a, a small garden, and a, and a, and a retail facility there, and they bring most of their product from Cape Elizabeth, sell there, and it actually is a retail outlet, a little bit crazy, it's a better exposure.
I would agree with Marty that we need to restrict the size of the building. You know, it could, it could be a two-way garage, that would be, you know, not a small building.
Two-way garage is a small building.
I don't know, I don't think my garage is that small, if I...
It is.
I have a two-way garage, I could put three cars in there and a bunch of other stuff, I don't think it's that...
I didn't say, two-way garage is small.
How about we do this, if, if the board agrees, we have sort of a, a good start on an idea, if we kind of put this together, and then when we get together again with more members of the board, I think maybe back this idea around some more and see if we need some limitations on building size, or setbacks, or frontage, or anything else like that.
Yeah, it sounds like a good idea.
You got enough to throw some language together?
Yeah.
I can, I can beef this up quite a bit now.
I'll leave them, I'll...
Thousand square feet isn't that small, isn't that big, uh, small?
It's not that big.
No, I'm not...
But it's not that big either.
That's right, it's not, a thousand square feet is...
I know.
All right.
But let's, let's go that around next time. Now, while, while you're here, do you have any comments, and, and for the record, I'm addressing Ms. Drew, do you have any comments on what we've come up with so far?
Well, I, I want to thank you for all the effort that you've put into this for me, this is fabulous. No, I, I think you're, you're working around to, to a solution that could probably work for me, and I can always continue with a home occupation as I am, but it would be fabulous if I could do something in a bigger space. I have ten acres, my ten acres is wet, I have some challenges on putting another building there, and I probably have some challenges with setback, I'm not sure what you're going to come up with, but you'll notice all my buildings, of course, aren't at one side, on the higher ground, and my pasture at times is, is fairly wet, but the girls don't seem to mind, they slough right through it.
They get their feet wet, they're washing their toes.
They have a mud bath on their feet, but...
That good for the wool.
I, I think, no, not really, but there's not a whole lot that low on their legs. I probably can meet whatever you may come up with for setbacks, because I do have about six hundred feet of frontage, I also have a separate access, my driveway is very close to my side where the, the old Keizer house is, my driveway is very close there. I do have another access in the middle of that long road frontage, and there is some wet area, but I, I can probably work around, you know, what you come up with. So I'm, I'm very pleased with the effort that you've put into this, it will, it will help me, you know.
Very good, we thank you for joining us, and hope you continue to come to our meetings. But also, you know, as, as we're talking about this, and as you're thinking about this, you're associated with other people who run operations like this, and maybe you can bring some of that experience to us too, as we talk about what restrictions we might want to place on them.
Yeah, what I, what I find sometimes talking with friends, most of my friends with Elpaccas are north of here, because most of the state of Maine is north of here, you know, they have, they have no issues many times work around, they just stick a building wherever they put it, and they just open.
Everybody's happy.
Apparently, I, you know, I'm, I'm a little different in your county than, you know, some other counties in Maine, but, so I don't, I don't hear a lot from the others of having issues with selling from their homes. They pretty much do wherever they want, whether it's legal or not, I don't know, but...
Probably in their town it is.
It, it may be, so, but if I, if I have any ideas, certainly I'll, I'll pass them on.
Okay, well, thank you.
Question, just in this...
Any other comments by the board before we move on?
No.
I just have a question, do you know the law firm in Gray on Route 202?
In Gray?
It just started one time, so I'm wondering if they resell it or not.
I can't think of who that is, I know one in Conville, and Conville, and Gloucester.
Yeah.
I can't, I can't think of who that is.
It just started, that's what I was wondering.
Is it that on the way to Ashwood, Casino, it's kind of like Greg go out?
It's on 202, going towards Wyndham.
Okay.
It's right across from a house gunshot, so, I was just wondering, because they, they put a lot of money into the facility, and they're in a business, so I was wondering if there were, there were retail...
I'm looking at that, I, I can't think of who that is.
I wish I could tell you, the name's signed so small, I can't read it.
Is it six...
Sign ordinance.
Okay, yeah.
Sign ordinance.
Much bigger sign.
If the board is comfortable, then we'll move to item two, and we'll talk about site plan and conditional use approval procedures, and that primarily addresses whether the board will be voting on the individual criteria for the site plan approval, or voting on the approval as a group as a, as one item. And we have had discussions, many discussions about this, you have something for us, Ted?
Yeah, I, I thought this was the stream, I apologize, we've had this whole conversation with, and here's the farm retail stuff, I think.
Yeah, that, that was...
I'm just going to go now.
Farm retail was given out.
We've already had that.
My apologies. And they all got the...
And the bylaws.
Bylaws, yes.
The bylaws and the, to the, right, okay, proposed amendment to the, at the last meeting, Mr. Chairman, you may recall that there was a discussion as to whether, I believe one of the selection was, was acting in that discussion, as to whether, what, what was the best way to deal with the concern that the board had in meeting the MMA mandate, that whenever you have approval, especially in conditional uses, and we have a series of criteria that are, must be met in order to get an approval, that vote, that the board vote on the applications compliance with those specific criteria that are specified.
Individually.
Individually, that there be individual votes on, in our case, we have, I believe, twelve criteria, on each of those twelve criteria that we would, that we would vote on, and the question was, does the board do that procedurally, or does the board do that by regulatory mandate? And one involves basically a policy or an amendment to the bylaw, and the other would involve a mandate that's specified in the ordinance, and I gave you an option to do either or, you'll find that there's two documents in your little packet there, one is, deals with proposed amendments to the planning board bylaws, and that deals with voting on criteria for approval, that's dated October 31st, 2012, and the, the second one is a page out of the new conditional use section, which is section 11, and it's 11-3, in which there's a specification in the, in the, the new criteria for approval in conditional uses. That would be right out of the zoning law.
Sorry, nine-seven-age, is that it?
Yeah, it's nine-seven-age with a couple of changes in it, but pretty much nine-seven-age. Not a lot of changes, we might, might change some of the language, but, um, so you have a choice. You can do either or both. Certainly changes to the, uh, to the procedures or the bylaws, um, are not going to. That ensures that the, the board does in fact make a policy. And if, but if you put it in the, in the ordinance, require, it is a requirement for the board to do it every single time. It's a question of how, how, how much the board wants to ensure that they meet that MMA, the, the, that vote.
So are you saying that the, the, in terms of con for the, putting it into the bylaws, is that the board does, is not bound to go to follow its bylaws at all times?
No, the, the board is, well, at any point, the board has to follow the bylaws. That is your operating procedures. For instance, tonight, there's, there was the mandate that we have a quorum of four. There's nothing in the ordinance requires us to have a quorum of four in order to have this meeting. What requires us to have four in order to convene this meeting is the bylaw, okay? And so, um, in this particular case, if you look at item number E in their votes and findings of fact, that establishes that, uh, it says during the fin, establishment of findings of fact, the board shall vote on each individual criteria for approval specified for either plenary or, should be, uh, plenary or conditional use applications as established in your underland use ordinance. So that basically would say that you're required by procedure to do this every time, so.
So correct me if I'm wrong, either way, either way we do it, required to do it. The only difference that I see is that the bylaws can be amended by the board, whereas the other one requires town meeting.
Exactly. So you could do this one and it would take effect immediately. This one, you'd have to wait until the town meeting decides to do it. Also, I mean, you could have a challenge in the bylaw, there's nothing legally binding about the bylaws. From a, from a regulatory standpoint, there's nothing. You, in other words, if you did not follow your procedures here or you had to vote to suspend the procedures, which you can do by Robert's Rules of Order, you had to vote to suspend procedures and not vote on these criteria, you could do that, and if you were challenged legally, I'm not sure that that would stick. Whereas if it's in the ordinance and you did, and you failed to do that, that's, that's perfect opportunity for an overturn by the courts and a basis for a challenge by plaintiff or, uh, um.
An agreed.
So page two, page two creates more problems.
Well, not more problems, it's, it's more difficult to do.
More problems to challenge. And be an overturn.
So you think don't follow it? Yeah, I suppose that's what Ted was saying.
Yes, that's what I'm just trying to say, he's not listening.
I'm listening.
Page two would, if we didn't follow, if we changed.
Page two, I'm sorry.
If we shouldn't sit on page two, which is the ordinance.
The ordinance.
And we didn't follow the ordinance, it could be overturned very easily.
Yes, right.
If we put it on page one, we can suspend the rules, do it in another way and it wouldn't sus, it probably wouldn't sus, um.
Make, um, meet a challenge.
It, it couldn't be overturned on that basis, but it could still be overturned on the, on the facts, right?
Right.
And, and, and what MMA has said is there have been, there's case law that says it doesn't matter if it's the ordinance or not, should be doing it, um, because the law court has said before, if you don't vote on the individual criteria, then you're, you're making an arbitrary and capricious decision. You're not considering each one of those criteria when you do your final vote, you're just saying overall, we like it. And that's what they're concerned and that's why they've challenged, the law court has challenged this.
And I, I need clarification on something.
Go ahead, Chris.
According to 97H, the board shall review the application in accordance with all of the evidence submitted by the applicant and shall make specific factual findings that the following are met, and then it lists out the, the eight various criteria. If I'm looking at, at that, in order for us to meet that requirement, we have to vote on each one of these.
It always says findings of fact.
It, it says specific findings of fact that the following are met.
Right.
So we would have to vote on 9, 97H1, that the use is compatible with and similar.
No.
We could look at all eight at the same time.
Cause if you remember the.
And that's been the whole problem all along.
And, and that, and that, that's because when we read it, when we read the findings of fact, you know, when I, when we go through that, there, it will say net, you know, H, 9HY, in that there is no increase in traffic or there is no increased pedestrian, uh, traffic conflicts. That's findings of fact, you met that criteria because you've specified how they need it in each one of those criteria. Instead of the way we used to do it, which was, oh yeah, they, they, there's no gen, there's no impacts to traffic, there's no impacts of this, without specifying how there is no impact. I think by looking at each piece, each criteria, that we're more likely to not overlook something. When you do it as one general vote, I think that you do, you know. But I think we should still keep the ability to do that if it was something that.
Exceduating circumstances.
Right. And I think that putting it in the bylaws would be a much better place. I'm working on another board somewhere else in the state where currently what should be in rules is in law. And they wanna change it and it's gonna take an act of the legislature to change it and it's a mess. So here we have, you know, do we wanna have it so that we have to wait until the town meeting to change the procedure that we should be able to control ourselves?
But, but I would make the argument that MMA says that we have to take this vote on every one of them, regardless of whether it's in the ordinance or in the bylaws, so it should be in the ordinance because the, we can supersede the bylaws whenever we feel like it. We just, I don't like, I don't feel like doing that tonight, so I'm gonna motion that we don't do it. And if I get enough people who agree with me, then we don't have to, but if it's in the ordinance, we don't have a choice in that. We have to do it that way. And MMA has said, we have to do it that way.
But MMA is a. That's very true.
In so many ways. But, but, did you have another comment before, all right? Go ahead.
Like I said, you're just creating more problems for ourselves. Because turn, if we put it into the ordinance, okay, you're opening up more doors to have things challenged and overturned, or where we do our due diligence here. Everything's meet the requirement. As we turn on, as the case of, uh, the law court.
Uh, I, in terms of Richard's hesitation that, that the rules can be suspended at any time, it, it still takes a majority vote of the board to do that. So you would have to have a lot of like-minded people and, you know, that people on this board tend to be very responsible. I think you're gonna have a hard time with that. So the, the advantage of doing it in rules is that we can do it immediately. And it is binding unless the board votes to suspend them. The, putting it into ordinance, we'll have to wait for town meeting, but we cannot suspend them purely. And go ahead, wait a minute.
One, one more thing is, is we can act on this immediately and put it in rules and then discuss that later date as to whether we want to enforce it by putting it in regulation. So putting it into rules immediately doesn't preclude us from putting it into.
That's correct, that's true.
Marty?
Thing is also that, who is, the way we do our due diligence, okay, who is gonna actually request to have something suspended?
Anybody.
We never have, along the way, over the years.
And, and I would argue, Marty, that when I first came on the board, we went through 97H, item by item, and voted on them. And we don't anymore. It wasn't a question of somebody voting, uh, to suspend them, we just stopped doing it. We just changed the way in which we were actually voting on whether or not they met the standard. We went from doing every one of them to about a year and a half or two years ago, just deciding that, well, yeah, they've met these, so we took one vote to cover all of them.
And we've come back from that and that.
We haven't yet. That, that's what, no, that's what's led up to this discussion is.
But I, I think the discussions, previous discussions by the board and, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but previous, recent discussions by the board have all supported doing this item by item vote, you know, vote on this item by item, so I don't think we're going contrary.
We just haven't had anything recently come up to the.
Right, we just haven't had the opportunity to put it into, uh, an actual formal rule, whether it be in our rules or in the ordinance, so now we're just discussing where is it most appropriate? And, you know, Greg has a good point, we can do it in rules now and always put it in the ordinance later if we need to.
Uh, just one thing, I, I think it's very easy to change the method that you do something when you don't have a rule that says that you're supposed to do it a certain way. Once you put a rule in place that says you have it, it's very unlikely that unless the circumstances are extenuating, anybody's gonna ask to suspend the rules. In, in a public forum, especially, you're gonna have the public that's gonna get angry if you suspend the rules week after week after week. And then you'll have a public outcry to put it into regulation.
Marty?
You have a rule, it may be broken.
I can't imagine what the, what, what the advantage is.
Well, I also think that the advantage of sticking it in the ordinance is that it lets the applicant know that we're gonna vote on every one of these and they have to, they have to meet these criteria. It's not a question of, well, we'll, we'll go before the board and see what we can do about it. Cause they're not gonna see our bylaws and they're not gonna see our guidelines that we operate on. If it's in here, they know they don't have a choice, you have to meet it.
Well, you would let them know that as matter of course, that they're gonna be individually, because I'm sure you get one or two every year that may think that they can get around a rule, a criteria.
Don't we get them all the time?
We got them all this year.
Yeah.
You can remember when, when, when Marty had a specific issue that an applicant was trying to sidestep constantly, wasn't important. And, and if we went down here in terms of fire protection or public safety, we vote that down, this whole thing fails.
Right.
You know, you don't think it's important, however, that board member thinks it's important, it's critical, and he's convinced the rest of the board that it's critical and you didn't meet that criteria. Sayonara, you're denied. That's another thing, is if we have applicants who are trying to sidestep us, it's only gonna reinforce our, our want to stick by the rules. We're not going to sidestep a, a, a rule because somebody's pressuring us to do it. We're more likely to kick back. And I'm just. Instead of being arbitrary and capricious, I mean, the biggest thing about this is, there's always, the biggest argument, if you're challenging a board decision, is that it was an arbitrary and capricious decision, that there wasn't a real basis for the denial.
Right.
And this, in this, you're specifying what the basis of that denial is. And frankly speak, we haven't denied anything yet, we will. And when we do, we're gonna be.
We all stick to C and P.
But when we vote on. Didn't deny C and P initially.
Initially?
Yeah, initially we did.
Yes, by our rules.
By our rules.
So I mean, you see.
Is anyone ready to make a motion on this at this point?
Or do we need a full?
We don't, well, if you feel we do, we can wait.
I, I agree with what Greg has said before, we had, so that if we have other members, I mean, we can turn around, propose it to be our discussion and everything else.
We can, we can wait until we have more members on the board.
I just thought it was.
I don't think it'll hurt, we don't have anything before us right now to force this.
And, and in terms of, you know, I just, if we, if we do it by the rules now, it's not a big deal. We're rewriting the entire ordinance, I'd like to see it in the ordinance, I'd like to see it as part of, this is what it says and this is what the requirement is. So we could, we could very easily say, you know, from now until the time we get the ordinance redone, it's in the rules.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, cause we, I, if we're gonna rewrite the ordinance, when we get to that point, I'll argue that we put.
One year.
That way, oh, I don't know what year we'll get there, Marty.
Okay, well, so what's the feeling of the board, you wanna wait until we have more members on the board to make a decision?
I just, honestly, I see no reason to, if you look at the discussion that we had a, a couple of weeks ago, I think we were all pretty much in agreement that we need to do this, so just make it part of our rules.
Why not?
Sure.
One question, you wanna throw, the item B, which is underlined in there? This is a selectman, this is a selectman's policy, let's make it.
Absolutely.
Let's just say again.
Outstanding violations, the planning board shall not consider or act upon any application for a land use activity on a parcel or property that is in violation of the Arundel Land Use Ordinance.
Definitely.
Subdivision ordinance, street and road construction ordinance, conditions of approval or any other ordinance of the town of Arundel until such violation has been corrected, absolutely.
Are you gonna move to accept this as it's written?
I am going to move to accept item B and item E as part of the bylaws.
No.
Well, wouldn't the whole thing be part of the?
It says unanimous vote.
We would have to.
Oh, yeah, cause we, cause we changed the, the, the number, the sequence number, you say, right?
It's whole section, section.
So section seven, board procedure. I make a motion that we accept that as part of the, the planning board bylaws.
Question.
Second.
Can we have a second by Greg, question, Marty?
Do we have to have a unanimous vote?
No, only if there are three members. Section D says a unanimous vote shall be needed to approve any application before the board, only where the resulting quorum is three members.
You have a problem here. The quorum is not three.
Four.
Up four is four, we have four people here.
No, but what I'm saying is that rule is, is incorrect.
Right.
Does anybody wanna amend it or change that?
I'm going to amend, um. Well, wait a minute now.
And you have to exist in motion.
Right, so.
Take care of that motion and bring the other one back.
Right, so we've gotta redo it, so if we.
I still have three.
If we vote this down and then redo the motion to take care of that amendment, that will.
Well, I'll just, I'll just, I'll just pull my motion.
Withdraw the motion, I'm not sure you can do that after a second, can you?
Sure.
Yeah, second.
Into second, withdraw, I withdraw my second.
And I withdraw my motion.
Okay, motion is withdrawn properly.
I would like to make a.
Discussion.
I would like to make a motion that we change item D, unanimous vote, to approve any application where the resulting quorum is four members. But it would, it would require a unanimous vote.
Well, that's not true, that's not true.
Well, that's, that's what this says. And if that's not true, then we should just pull that out completely.
Cause we have, yeah, cause we don't need.
Majority is three, I, I don't see there as a problem.
Majority, you have seven, you have seven and, and you have.
Four is the majority, so they'd have to vote on it, then all four would have to vote, it would have to be a unanimous vote. Cause if one person voted no and the other three people that weren't there wanted to vote no.
The majority is, but not, not unanimous.
I think that's why this was set up that way, so that, so that you would be forced to have the three people that were voting all be in agreement.
But we, the problem is that a quorum is no longer three, this was.
The quorum is four.
We're on this point. The question is, do we need, do you want four to approve something? If you have, if you have four members, like right now, if, if you have a majority of who is sitting here, three, in this case, vote to approve something. Uh, and one, let's say Marty doesn't, doesn't vote, does that mean it's automatically denied?
That's what we need, that's why.
That's what this, yeah, that's what it is.
That's what, if we change it to four, that's what would happen.
That's what would happen, yeah.
Right, and that's not right because then if you have five, you could approve with a vote of three.
No, a majority.
Yeah.
Which is a vote of three.
Which would be a vote of three.
Majority, if you have four and two and two, there's a majority, so it's gonna. But unanimous means all, everybody.
So Marty's arguing that it should be a simple majority.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, let's look at majority vote above, which is B, you know, C, we see above, majority vote, all action taken by a majority. by a majority vote and meaning which there is a quorum of the board.
Right.
A majority of voters members present is necessary to prove any applications before the board.
Then D contradicts.
D contradicts.
No, because at the time of the bylaws, still is three.
Right.
The bylaws didn't change. So now you have to turn around and throw that three to the four.
So I'm going to make my motion. I'm going to make the motion that we take section seven, striking out D unanimous vote. Take the entire piece out of there. And other than that, approve it as presented.
And reletter it.
And relettered.
Okay.
I'll second that.
You have a motion in the second, which is to approve as presented, striking the current item D, which is the unanimous vote clause. Any discussion? Okay, hearing done, all in favor.
Yeah.
That's unanimous.
Sure.
Okay, you're sure by that.
Okay, that problem came off the, the, the deck pretty quickly.
Okay.
We got something done.
So we got something done, that's a good thing. So now we're down to item three, which is a downtown business district discussion of signage design.
This is more problematic.
I did not do any homework.
I have a suggestion.
I was going to ask if you guys did do your homeworks.
I did not. I had weather and. I don't get out there in the day, so I can't see much of things. That dark hard.
Did it, uh, did you have a suggestion?
I have a suggestion for the signs. And you may all think it's crazy, but such as like, I like C, the freestanding sign not to exceed. I'm not sure if this says ten or fifteen because it has different. Uh, so, but I like the idea of freestanding signs and people being able to have them. But other than that, I've looked at this and I thought this bonus signage area, the qualifying signage, in terms of wood window onyx size, limited carved, painted wood signs, window lettering, retractable onyx, architectural signage, it's harmoniously incorporated into the design, the graphic signage, the historic signage. I think that's what our sign, sign ordinance should be. And I don't care how big you sign, you want your sign to be. If it looks like a nice sign and fits into the, to the area well, okay. I, I disagree with the whole idea of bonus signage. I just think, you know, you're, you're in the business district, make it look nice and, and fit with what we're trying to do. And we don't need to go through the whole, you know, so many square feet on the facade of the building or, or, you know, occupying this, this kind of signage transfer, non-transferable between first and second floors or, or the whole neon sign lighting or any of that. And I think we need to do it. I think we could just take that section where it says bonus sign area and just change it to sign area and say this is what we're looking at from a signage point of view.
What page are you on?
Uh, page five of section seven.
My only one question to ask you, okay, you, you might somewhat bend through the paperwork a bit, but how many of you actually have ever priced out a sign?
More than once.
Okay. But in terms of what are you putting that, Marty?
The fact is, you have criterias and everything else to put up a business. Okay? And the main fact is, what I'm part of always argue was, was square footage. Okay? And the fact is, signs aren't cheap. Do you want somebody to come to business or anything else and meet all the criterias and can't afford to put up a sign that is another $10,000?
So are you arguing that the criteria are too expensive?
I'm just saying, overall, for business purposes, okay? And lighting purposes, there is two different avenues which you're speaking of.
Okay.
Cause my sign's not lit. Yes, it looks like junk. Yes, I have a new one. But also two along the way. I patched it up and I pulled a sign per, a sign permit several years ago to put one up and never did. And guess what? I was still charged for these signs. Because adding top of that increases your personal property, uh, your business taxes, just for signage.
What we're talking about now though is the design, so you're talking.
I'm just saying.
I think your argument was that the criteria that are in there are, are too costly.
Were you suggesting we shouldn't allow signs because they're too costly?
That's what it sounded like.
No, you, you, you're given criterias or per se and that if, if you don't meet this, you can't put a sign.
Are you suggesting that people just be allowed to grab a piece of plywood and a can of paint and spray paint?
Not spray paint, not spray paint.
Or hand, hand letter Joe's Garage themselves? Don't think that fits in with what we're looking for.
I've had that.
Right.
But I was not professionally.
But that's, that's part of the, the discussion we're having is how much control do we want to have over the, the quality of the sign? And part of Ted's proposal was that the better quality of a sign, a larger area, you could get, you could get the bonus area. Richard is saying, well, you know, if we get that, we should just have good quality signs. So good quality, we have to remember is a subjective thing too.
Yeah, but I think if we put it in the standards, it's no different than when you had VIP in front of you and you made them put the facade on the building, you made them put the gables on the building, um, you worked with them. They were able to come up with the, that cost them extra money to build. And getting a better quality sign is no more than the same thing that was done to VIP with their.
Okay, I agree with you. You're, you're working with a corporation. Okay, when you turn around, you have working with an individual.
Well, let me ask you, what about W. Cushion? Remember that outfit?
Okay, W. Cushion across the street, small, very delicate, very nice sign. I agree with you on that.
Nice, nice sign.
Yeah, very distinctive, don't you think?
Yes, but the fact is, he doesn't.
He's a real small operation.
But he doesn't, that's the word I'm trying to use. He's very unique in his business.
And I think he tries to project that uniqueness. What he's trying to do is, in his signage, he's trying to project that this is a unique place, this is. I have a business that I am very proud of and I, it, it has quality and the sign speaks that I have a unique place, come on in.
That's.
That's a place that's, that's a sign that's inviting, it's indifferent than the rest of the signage in that neighborhood. It's not that much different. I mean, you know, we've got the daycare next, next door and that's kind of an intriguing sign they've got. But it's a very, it's a very, uh, appealing sign. And it makes you want to find out, who are these guys? What do they do? And that's, I think, one of the things that you want to do, your, your objective in signage is to attract customers. And that's ultimately what your objective in the sign is to do, is to bring customers in, correct? Or at least let clients know that you exist.
Location or something.
It lets you know, it, it lets your clientele, your customer base know, A, where you are and B, that they should come and see you. They should find out who you are.
But my other thought, thought or question along that line is, like I said, I'm not complaining about a sign, okay? But where will that also go in the future? Okay, where he has, his business is more or less in the back, correct? What he had on that part of it, which was the old, old garage.
That's his manufacturing area. His retail is actually in the building. He's in the front.
But it's not in the house.
Yeah, it's in the house. It's in the house.
No, because he turned out the house was going to be turned into other spots for other businesses.
He's got his offices and he also, that's where his, that's where he retails out his patterns and his di. He can walk in and buy di stuff.
Yes, but that, that was, it wasn't in the house. It was the new addition that he put on next to the, the old garage.
Right.
But I'm talking about the house itself.
Let's, let's continue on, focus on the sign. So where were you, where were you going with that?
Okay, I get the sign that he has there, which is very delicate and everything else. But if he has other businesses in there, what kind of sign are you going to have to have them in?
Well, I'm going to, right now I have a sign that meets the criteria of that area, but he's going to have to do a lot of things to get more businesses in there because he has adequate parking for his business.
Well, this is, it's a hyperfit.
I see the hyperfit. And that's, and that's a decision that he's going to have to make. I mean, there's a certain amount of signage you can add on the site. How he allocates that signage is, is going to be his design challenge.
Yeah.
Cause you give a certain amount and, which it actually currently is a lot, by the way. Um, and he's, he's, he's giving that a certain amount and how he allocates is his decision. And I'm sure he's given some thought to that. Or if he hasn't, that's unfortunate because that means he'll have to make other signage arrangements in there, maybe in the building, there may be a bracket beneath that sign, he knows. But I mean, that's a decision the business owner makes. We're not going to specify how the business owner allocates the signage. We're basically saying, you get so many square feet of sign. I'm, my proposal was you get more. If you do a high quality sign, we're going to give you more. Rich is, is suggesting, let's not play that game. Let's not have two different qualities of signage along the road. Let's require high quality signage and try to specify exactly what those ranges of quality are. So the applicant has a clear idea. And that's the fundamental issue that we're going to have to, have to, I think we should address tonight, is which one of those approaches do we want to do? Do we want to use carrot or do we want to use stick? Actually, the carrot, it's carrot and stick or just stick approach.
Well, and let's, let's throw a third one into the mix, which is let's not regulate signage. It's just because it's a business decision. And if you want your business to be appealing, you put up a good sign, it doesn't matter to you. Maybe you put up no sign or.
The, the, the problem I see that creating is that I move a professional office in there and I spend a couple of grand and I get a really nice sign and the guy next door to me spray paints a piece of plywood and makes it look like crap. My signage has just got wasted.
Yeah, we're, we're talking about route one here. We're talking about the public face of the town. The public face is the private signs.
Yeah.
You know, and people driving through a town and they see, you know, well-made signs, professional quality signs, it looks nice. If you go through an area of town and all the signs are hats falling down, they're not painted, they're, you know, cardboard, you know, pizza.
It's, you know, all Pepsi's, Pepsi signs.
Yeah.
The issue is, what are we trying to achieve? It goes back, all the way back to that same, the same issue of what is the goal we're trying to achieve? And I think our objective in doing all this is try to make Arundel an attractive place that business can come to. And we're creating several faces to try to capture that broad market that we're trying to, to capture. And that broad market is we're trying to get the, the, uh, the more smaller village scale close to the road and then behind that, the larger scale. I think the larger scale stuff, the signage isn't as critical when you go in there, although I think there'll be a ripple effect of what happens in front. But the objective is to try to create that village image along the road. That downtown, that this is Arundel downtown. This is our Arundel downtown here and it reflects that. And calling the sign is good. Hey, if you've got a business, this is a good place to come because you don't, you got parking and you got exposure and you've got Kennebunk and Kennebunkport, you know, tourists coming through. And you've got a lot of stuff here, you've got a lot of opportunity here that you can't get anymore in Kennebunk, that you can't get in there. Um, this is a good place to be. This is going to be the up and coming place. And signage is as, as Greg says, signage is the face of this community. And we got, we put up one sign, welcome to Arundel. That's our one sign. That's what the community does. The rest is all for the private sector. And what we're trying to do is say to the private sector, it's in your best interest to create a character area here. It's in your business interest to create a character area together, not individually, but together. You, if everybody does this, you're going to create a character area that A, is going to be more attractive to your customer base. And B, is going to increase the valuation. You, and the more the place becomes an attractive place to do business, the more other businesses are going to want to come here to, to, to set up their business. And we've got more space than just about any other community north of here. Or frankly, just that one section in Wells is the only other empty place along route one that I can pick up.
Yes, Marty, you had a question.
It's all fine, Danny.
Yeah.
Okay? You can't see anything. Because you said the businesses, but when is the town going to open its eyes to see Route One?
Right, but let's.
No, 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 no. I am, I am, I am. Because right now.
Focusing on lighting.
No.
Yeah, I am too.
This is all part of the game. Okay, because I had a sign. I've had a sign for years. Now all of a sudden I can't light it up because it doesn't supposedly require it. Turn around and it doesn't have enough dark background. But it's a company sign, okay?
Okay, so you're talking about lighted signs.
You're talking about lighting, internally lit signs or you could put, you could put a ground light on that, Marty? There's nothing to prevent you from putting ground lights on those. Or do the same thing that W. Cushion did. He put them out on the lights on top, shutting down. Chairman, why do you want to do it? You could do it. You can do an externally lit sign in this town.
We do have to discuss lighted signs.
We, we will do, but, but I just want to make clear to Marty, I get, if I may, Mr. Chairman, it's two things. I, I agree with, Marty's got a concern about lighting along Route One. I think that's a legitimate concern. I think that's, that's something that the board will have to take a stand on. But more importantly, I think it's something that needs to go to the selectmen because that's a, that's a, that's a fundamental design decision that we can propose to the, to the board of selectmen, to the townspeople, and we can pursue ways of doing that. We could even use TIF money for that if we want to. Terrific. I can't use C2BJ because we don't qualify yet.
Say why?
I can't use C2BJ because I can't qualify.
Where does C2BJ?
Uh, it's community building.
Doesn't need anything.
Well, we don't have a downtown, we're creating.
But yes, it is a concern that the board.
It should be a concern and, and Marty is right and I, I would submit, Mr. Chairman, and to the rest of the board, Marty is right. There should, if we're going to create a downtown area, we, we need some, a lighting plan. We're probably going to need a lighting plan that the town's going to have to commit to. Or else come up with a plan in order to make sure that lighting is there. I don't think it should drive all of our decisions here, but I think, I agree with you, Marty. I think it's part of the streetscape we want to create along Route One. That is part of the character. It is part of safety and it is something we should take a very serious look at. I'm not sure, unless we're going to specify businesses put in that, that lighting, which we could, um, I think it's something that we're going to have to do aside from the zoning ordinance, if you know what I mean.
I've been after this for over 20 plus years.
I know. I know. And that's certainly something we could do in the comp plan rewrite and that's certainly something we could do aside from the comp plan rewrite. Remember, we're working with the economic development committee and we say, look, we think that this is important. If Route One's going to be a viable place, it needs some lighting. It needs some infrastructure and lighting is one of the important infrastructures. So how are we going to plan for this? We recommend that we do have a lighting plan, that we design it out and that the town come up with a way of paying for it.
The other thing is supposedly Route One. I'm sorry, Richard.
That's quite okay, go ahead.
The fact is, Route One is supposed to stay high. The fact is, Route One is supposed to stay silent.
Yeah, but for now, can you go stick to the signage design?
Thank you, because that's what I was gonna say. We're gonna address lighting at another point during this whole rewrite. And, and I'm as guilty as everybody else. I think our biggest problem is that we start chasing down rabbit holes and we forget, we're dealing with signs. Let's look at the signs and decide what we wanna do with the signs. When we get to lighting, we can look at the lighting.
Right.
We can't, we can't do the whole thing as one, one piece.
So with, with the signage, we're looking at a couple of alternatives. And you had these printed out.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have a color code. Yeah, what I wanted to do is just throw out some, some, some types of signage. And it didn't cover all the ones I wanted to because I started seeing how bad the content is. That's just very hideous. The first one was dealing with what we call a traditional wood carved or composite carved sign. Since you look at Yesterday's Dreams, which is actually an auto, auto repair shop, it's actually, it's a restoration shop. You see, that's actually composite material. That's not even wood. You know, that's a composite material, painted composite material sign. So when you guys were asking, what's this composite material? That's it. You know, and I'm, I'm, I'm used to more Cumberland County or up a little bit ways, but Joe's
The richer area.
Joe, no, no, it's not richer.
But you were saying the last time that you wanted to exclude composite signs.
I, I didn't, this is what I meant by composite signs. It's a material, it's a plastic material, easily carvable, easily moldable, that when painted, it looks like a wood sign. It's cheaper than a carved wood sign. It creates a similar effect. So it addresses Marty's concerns about economics, at the same time, has character. And you can see that it does have character. If you look at, and I'm not trying to make a plug for a particular sign maker, because there's many sign makers, all exquisite. But not all, but many do a fine job. Scarborough Signs up in Scarborough on Route One, if you've ever gone by it, either in Dunston Corner, they do this stuff all the time. And that's one of their specialties. So that's a composite sign, to answer the question of what people are saying. The dentistry sign that you see there, that's a wood painted sign. I don't believe it's, probably the dentistry is the only thing that's carved. It's wood painted. Well done, wood painted. We have those here in this town. We have signs like that. Branch Brook comes to mind. Arundel Machine comes to mind. On, on Goss, Goss Brook Business Park, or Business Hill. There's a lot of them that do this.
Actually, those are relatively cheap signs to make.
They are.
Because those are made specifically for places that have turnovers and businesses. So they're very cheap to replace those signs for the new occupant.
It's, it's a delusion that all wood signs are expensive. They are. Paradise Lane, that's a little bit more. You can see that is a carved sign. You tell by the relief in the letters in Paradise Lane and the relief in the numbers. However, look at the sign below it, the rental. That, that basically, that's just a simple painted sign. Probably, actually, it's probably not painted. It's probably vinyl letters and a white background. And it's probably had been treated. It's basically a lacquer after that. The next one was The next one is a complete failure and shows why we need, I need to get a color copier. This was basically dealing with the neon concept, when everybody looked at me sideways when I mentioned neon. I can't remember who said they really liked neon.
Right.
Oh, it does, yeah, that's right. Very soon.
I'm cheesy.
That's okay.
I have a thing about neon too. I think it's, it's great. The thing about neon though is you've gotta have
You can do so much with it.
You can do a great amount of things. It's very expensive. You do a lot of things with it. But the key, the big problem with it is you've gotta have a night environment. You've gotta do your business at night in order to take advantage of, of neon. For most of our existing businesses here in Arundel, neon's gonna be absolutely no good because they're not open after six o'clock. And it's a nighttime situation. The only thing it is, is for, for recognition. And, you know, there's sometimes, you, some of the older neon signs look terrible in daylight. They have a sign behind the neon. That's awful. But they have new ways of doing it, and that's what the, the city sign directors, you know, I wish this came out well because they've got, they did, they did neon so that it looked great in the daytime too. The picture in the middle that's all black, that's, remember I told you about Alexandria Bay in, in the Thousand Islands area of St. Louis Seaway? That's Alexandria, and I wish it had come out because it looks a lot better than that. All the buildings are edged in neon. They go right up the roof line and down the roof line of the pink buildings. So everything's edged in, in that. It's a tourist town. Its intent is to bring people in, off, out of their motorboats into the town for nightlife. It's a nightlife town. And that's one of the deficits to neon that is designed for the night. Marty had brought this up, actually, all of you have brought up the issue of now we have the new letter boards. We have the electronic letter boards, something that we have to grapple with as to whether, as to its its applicability. Because right now, I don't think we really allow letter boards. Those kind of electronic letter boards. Certainly, it's dark background with lighter lettering on it. Except when you get the red, which is very unreal, frankly, speaking, you know, about the rest of it. And I find the yellow myself to be a little glaring at night.
Well, the lettering, the lettering ones themselves aren't all that bad, but there were some of them out there. I think of one as a real estate place on, I don't know if it's 302 yet, they're going up 302 up that way, but it's
In Wyndham?
It's not quite in Wyndham yet. It's getting up close. It might be in Wyndham. It's close to it anyway, but you're, as you're driving up, but it's dark. That thing is so bright, it literally blinds you. And that is horrible, you know, that's, I mean, I don't know why they don't tone it down in the first place, but I think it could actually be a traffic hazard.
I agree with you. I agree. My biggest problem with these is I think they work fine in the daytime. I think at nighttime they are a glare. A glare producer. And I'm not sure how to deal with that. I think the Agape Christian Fellowship sign deals with that a little better because it's such a small band of it. And it's a roller, I don't think it's a roller, it's not a roller, it's just, you know, it's, it's, it's just a band where it doesn't dominate. It isn't that huge amount, like the volleyball, the Elkhorn one here, wow. And quite frankly, if you go on 302, I mean, but, but as you get off the interstate to go, if you get off the exit, if you were to go up in the, in the village and over to the firehouse, or anybody goes on 26th and Firehouse that got a yellow one, the thing's hideous. It's just like the number you were talking about down, and that's really actually in, that's really Portland. It's just in Portland, but it's in Westbrook. That's where it is. It's in Westbrook. Yeah, it's in Westbrook. And it is bright. The one in gray is just as bad. And if they're yellow and they glare at you and you can barely read them because your eyes, your pupils just go down.
Yeah, your eyes.
So the question is, it's not always a solution. These things are the rage, but sometimes they're doing
Well, another problem I see with them is a lot of animation in them, which is a bad, unacceptable thing.
The scrolling ones, or the ones with the flags, and the rolling and so forth. Moving signs, this town traditionally has said no to moving signs, blinking signs, any kind of sign that causes distraction for drivers. If we're moving this stuff close to the road, you know, that's gonna be a real concern. I don't like the idea of limiting. I think there's a lot of great technology that might be coming forward, but the animated signs, I think, are a real distraction. I have concerns about that. And then the brightness of some of these. I mean, the question is, what can we do? I mean, I don't, we set a lumen level that they have to be.
I would say so, yeah.
I don't know what that is. It's gonna take a long research.
But on the brightness of the sign, I think it's just because they're set in dark areas. If you look, if you look down here at New Life, New Life has one of these flashing signs. They got so much light down there that it's not blinding. Because you've got Home Depot with the traffic light and everything. There's tons of light. So you can read the sign and it doesn't really blind you. But if you're in a dark area, oh yeah, you're gonna be blinded.
Not only in Westbrook. There's some lights around it, but it is unbelievable. It's close to the road and it is just, it glazes.
I'm gonna drive by and see it, but I'm going by there as a day.
There's, there's no reason, and I'm sure it's turned up that way so it's visible during the daytime. But there should be a control on there that dims it down at night. It still makes it visible, but dims it down. I'm sure they can do that. But, you know, I, I, we will need to do some research if we decide that we wanna limit the intensity of those signs as to what's appropriate and what's enforceable. That's the other thing, because who's gonna go out there and
We had something on lighting that said that you couldn't have what? One candle foot at the road?
One per candle. No, you couldn't see half a foot candle.
Right, you couldn't exceed a half a foot candle. We can do the same with these. You can't exceed
But you also gotta have the technology to do that.
Well, if you've got the technology for the sign, then you've got the technology to figure out how to fix it.
That's probably true.
We've got the technology right here. Any cell phone will do that. Any smartphone will.
We do what?
Measure lumens.
Does it?
Sure.
Yeah, you can get an app for it.
Really?
Yeah. There's an app for everything out there.
An Android? You've got an app. An Android too? Really?
That's a bad word.
That's, really?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have the decibel meter on that.
Yeah, by hundred too, right? You got that. You can measure this about anything. You can measure acceleration.
Geez, is life after angry birds?
No, actually, the life was before angry birds.
No kidding.
Getting, getting back to the signs though, I mean, we can, it isn't that hard. And even if we, you know, obviously, the cell phone and our professional equipment. But even professional equipment to do that is not that expensive. I think what's expensive is to get somebody out there on a regular basis to measure it.
Exactly.
And, you know, if we're gonna put in regulations like that, we do have to think about the enforcement aspect.
So it's something that you, you folks do wanna deal with. I mean, it's not something you wanna exclude automatically.
And the, the animation, I would really like to talk about that too. Personally, I don't think the animations are all that distracting. Especially considering what people do in their cars these days. That's nothing. So.
I, I would have to say that it's like the amount of light off the sign. And if you go see some of these animated signs during the day, they're not distracting at all. But you get out there at night and all of a sudden, they're the brightest thing on the road and they're very disturbing.
Yeah, with that, I agree with you. When you get up to that brightness, that contrast. Yeah, what about that last sign? I like that one.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't think that's the image we wanna go with. I think that's something we have to be
All signs should be misspelled and temporary.
I think just like a
Simpapal.
Yeah, wow. What is it? Yard sales, bag sales. There's a limitation on how many times you can use it and how long you can, you can do it. And I think with these signs, we have to look at the same thing. We don't wanna exclude somebody from having a special sale and throwing out a sign, but it's gotta be a limit as to how long they can do it and
I'd actually rather see sandwich boards. I'd rather just say, yeah, sandwich board signs, which I, I actually think are pretty, pretty good. Good temporary signs, you can put them out pretty quickly. They don't cost a lot to make. And if you do a good one, a lot better than this. I mean, this, this, I just feel like I wanna get, I just, I feel like I need to get bait every time I see these.
But I agree with Greg though, because there are certain circumstances and you wanna, don't wanna dictate everything a business owner can, cannot do. So what if you're having your sign redone or something like that? I mean, you know, just as a temporary thing, I don't see where it's a big deal. But I think there really need to be some limitations.
Well, right now, this is an illegal sign in the town of Arundel right now. This is an illegal sign. We do not, the zoning ordinance doesn't allow this. I can think of four places right now that have these. Yeah.
But
Well, it was also a perpetual, revolving door business that changes every six months.
Whether we allow them or not, I mean, we can just not permit them as they are now, but if we do decide we wanna give opportunity to put those signs out, I think they definitely need to have some limitations.
Okay.
I think one of those restrictions is that they can't be on the ground. They could generally be hung on a post.
A temporary sign?
That's a lot of effort.
What if you're, what if you're doing construction and you want a temporary sign?
Definitely reduce signs.
I, I don't know if Marty was going there, but you know, to kind of
It's kind of a treat.
Not necessarily the whole size.
But you go to the gas stations and these are high bred into gas station signs where they put prices for gas.
Reader board.
Yeah.
Yeah, reader boards, but in most, in most cases, if you look, you know, and most of those reader boards are also
Now those are going digital.
Those are going digital, number one and number two. They're also letter letters on the back, dark background because they recognize that
If they're lit.
You can read it.
If they're lit.
Even if they aren't lit, you can read it much better. You can, it just, it's just the mechanics of the eye. It's not that somebody lies that nobody ascribes to that because they want to. It's because it works better. It's just the mechanics of the eye respond better to, to light on dark than dark on light. It's just easier to read. So especially if you've got speed going, you want that. So I guess the question is, I mean, you've answered some of the questions already. I mean, you need to get a question and answer on neon because that wasn't very good. I mean, you got some answers. And you, you guys got to see what the wood signs actually involve, what composite signs can be. Neon? Yeah. You know, I have a prep, I like it, but you know, the question is, does that fit the image? And then the, the reader board signs that we're talking about here. I didn't include the typical raised letter signs, you know, the, the white versus dark background signs. I didn't get in any of that. But I wanted to discuss the reader boards, I mean, the electronic signs, see where we should go on that. I think I've got a direction on that from you. Check it out, but let's, let, let's do some more research, especially in luminosity. Because that's the greatest concern that, that you have is not necessarily that those exist, but that they're too bright in dark, especially in unlighted environments.
But we could control all of that through the lighting ordinance itself.
Or the sign, I would put it in the sign.
Would you?
Well, I would put it in the sign ordinance so, because otherwise you would be doing a, you would be doing enforcement actions instead of doing it as part of the design process.
But my concern
I don't wanna go out and chase people. I wanna, want the design to meet a certain standard when they come in with the shop drawings. Because that's what the code enforcement office is gonna ask. It's gonna want whatever they bring in to be in compliance. So that stamp's gotta be shown to be in compliance when they apply. Not chase them afterwards, because that's much more expensive proposition. It's a pain for everybody. It creates bad feelings.
But if we're going to do it for those signs, then we also have to do it for the neon signs and we have to do it for the wood carved signs. We have to dictate what kind of lighting that they have on the signs. I think it's much easier to simply say, hey, it's a half a foot candle or whatever that term is at the roadway and you can't be blinding people as they drive down the road. Set up some kind of a general standard on, on the lighting.
Okay, I have one question for you.
You have a problem with that? Go ahead.
I'm sure there is.
Question for you in that, okay? With the lighting in a dark area, lighting is more reflective, correct?
More contrasted.
Okay? If you have a lighted road with the same lighting on the sign, it is not as bright.
I agree. It is.
So right now, if you wanna go into your lighting ordinance, then you turn on, you're not being fair to the businesses, because the fact is, Route One is a black hole.
We don't have any control over the lights on Route One. That's a state issue.
No, it's not. It's a town issue.
Town issue.
It's a town issue.
But let's get back to the, to the brightness of the sign in terms of foot candles in these electronic signs. If you say, you know, a foot candle or so forth on the road, with the electronic signs, you can have very small bright areas. And by the time they get down to the road, they're gonna be the one foot candle. They're still gonna be damn bright when they're up on that sign.
That's a hard one.
I don't, I don't see, I don't see how we're gonna be able to
LEDs are like pinpoint lights.
Right.
They're not
Oh yeah. I, I, you can see them on headlights on cars.
If you come straight at an LED light, it is brighter than if you come head on the side.
But I, I don't, I don't, I'm not smart enough or I don't have read enough to, to know how you would be able to regulate that.
You'd have to, there are ways you could do it mathematically and set it up, but it can't be just as simple as, you know, one foot candle.
They must have diffusers that you put over, screens and stuff.
Add a certain distance.
Well, I think it's lumens at the point of origin, it might be more of that, because that's really, that's really a point source problem. It's not the reflective light, it's a lumen at the exact point where that LED is.
And if you do lumens at the point of origin, that's also an easier figure to get, because every manufacturer will have that number.
Right. What we've got to find out is, what is the comfort level?
What's appropriate.
What's the comfort level?
Right.
Because we know, we all have personal experience, that they manufacture signs that are not comfortable for the observer, especially in dark, dark, dark sky environments.
Okay.
So we've got to find out, you've got, and it sounds like I've got to talk to some manufacturers.
Right, and I think the other thing that we have to think about is the dimmability at night versus daytime, you know.
And that's one thing that we learned, that's one thing that we learned from Jim Stockman, when he's done those specifications on those LED lights, that he's specified for a number of projects here at the Runway, is that LED lights do have dimmable properties, and they can be regulated. It's not like a, you know, 250 watt metal alloyed light, where you can do it, it's 250, it's on or off. The LEDs are manageable in terms of the luminosity, and what we've got to do is find that level where it's comfortable where it is.
And in fact, LEDs are more manageable than any other light, as far as you can fine tune them to very exact standards. All right, so do we want to do any other discussion on the signs at this meeting, time is ticking away?
Well, I'd like to know how you all feel about the idea of not having size restrictions. What size do you want, do you want, do you want to say you can only have 14 square feet, or 35 square feet, or whatever it happens? I honestly don't think we should have any restriction on the size, we should dictate the quality and the style so that it conforms to the neighborhood, but other than that, I'm not too concerned about size. Unless you say, well, you know, at the road, you can only have so much, but on your building, you can put whatever you want.
We turn on in the past, it should distance back from the road, turn on allows you to have more square footage, okay?
But Marty, I'm talking about, we allow you to have a six foot sign at the road, and I don't care how much you have away from the road. I don't, have all the signage.
You can have it.
I think we've got, I don't want to see us get so restrictive that a business traditionally, like a barber shop that has painted, the windows are painted, and then have the barber pole, and, you know, a sign over the door that says what the name of the shop is. I don't want to see it where, oh, you got too many signs there.
But we need to pull it.
Also don't want, if you remember, a store that used to be in bitter for Aldos.
Yeah.
Don't want that kind of a situation.
You're right, but when you come before us for the review, and you bring us the plans, we can have control over.
Now, we're getting subjective.
It is, it is, signage is a very subjective issue.
But amount of signage is not.
That's correct.
Square footage is not, that's something that's defensible in court. If you say, well, we'll decide how much signage you get to have, that is, to me, number one, it's not defensible, two, it's tyrannical.
Okay, I see, I see your point.
Traditionally, we have always had a problem with the size of the sign, we've always had to go through all kinds of negotiations because it's half a foot too large or something, and we have to squeeze them to, which never makes sense to me.
We're more than 30 feet off the road.
I would tend to support allowing signs of any size with some criteria, but mostly looking at quality. But quality, we have to be very careful of, because it is subjective, so we need to come up with some real criteria to work with.
Sign of any size, there goes my collage of signs.
Did you have a further comment, Marty?
There is a scale, it's real skillish, it's, you know, you can get wonderful signage that's completely out of scale, and is actually distracting and ugly. Signage that's not the right scale is optional, quite frankly.
But it's, that's.
It's not, yeah, but.
Do you want to do that to your business? That's your business.
Well, number one.
You're not doing it to the business.
You're doing it to the people.
You're doing it to the community.
You're doing it to the community, you're doing it to the public, and your customers as well. And, you know, we're not trying to denigrate that, but I think everybody would agree, there are times when there is excess, and it's just not right. And we want to make sure that we don't restrict, but at the same time, we don't, we don't create a problem that we can't fix in the future. And we keep thinking, we've got to remember that no signage restrictions result in some of the areas that are often photographed and plastered on the fronts of books, and on the front of Audubon magazines as sign pollution, or as environmental graphic pollution. And we've all seen it, we've all driven down some of these places where it's just so cluttered that you can't read the signs. You can't read anybody's signs because there's so much visual, you know, clutter in the landscape, you're brain key handle. And that's a reality, that's just the mechanics of the eye and brain.
But that's why you might want to say, out by the road, you could have like a small, like the WB Cushing sign, you could have something like that by the road, but then on the building itself, if you wanted to put something else up.
Well, I think you should be able to put something up, but it still has to fit the scale of the building.
Can you come up with some criteria?
I can, I want to do some drawings. What I'll do is, I'll do some drawings of some buildings, and then look at percentage of signage on the building. Say, we're not going to tell you where to put the signage, we're going to say, you get a percentage of building facades that you put signage, I think I've already put that in here, but it doesn't mean anything unless you see it graphically. And some of these I basically did by drawing, and figuring out what's the maximum, what should get over that, and it's just too much. But let me do it graphic for the next meeting, that shows you, you know, proportions, and you guys decide, you know, what's too much, what isn't, you know, what, how much signage is too much signage, and how much is too little. We don't want to restrict businesses, we want to maintain the character at the same time, and create a great face for our Runway, because that's what we're trying to do, we're trying to increase our business valuation and attractiveness for new businesses to come here. And we've got to walk that line between making it a great attractive place and not being stifling at the same time. So I think graphics help us decide what those proportions should be.
Could you do me a favor, and when you make up those criteria for us to consider in those suggestions, put those goals at the top, so that we can concentrate on the overall goals, and then look at those criteria and see how they fit. Any other comments by the board on this issue?
Maybe so that we don't have to keep going into it, can we set a date for discussion of lighting?
Well, I don't know, when does that, when do we get there? That's a good point.
Do you want a section on lighting in the DB1 and DB2 district?
We need to look at it sooner or later, so why not?
I haven't attacked it, but I will.
Maybe set it for something along the road or something?
Yeah, okay, but the lighting, let's realize that the lighting is going to be a private property lighting, it's not going to be regulations on the town planning lighting, it's going to be lighting on private property. That's going to be the issue.
Street lighting is something we need to very awkwardly.
With the select.
I have tried it.
Well, you've probably done it alone, Marty, but if you do it with the planning board, and you do it with the EDC, the Economic Development Committee, I think there's a lot more, there's a lot greater strength in numbers, and if it's part of an overall plan, then, then, that a plan that's adopted by the town, at town meaning, quite frankly, then, no different than the comp plan, then it has to be implemented.
We turned out, addressed that part of the comprehensive plan, and when we turned ahead the MEBA down with Susan, she turned out, had all that together with the lighting and everything else, and it was totally ignored.
Well, I don't think it will be this time, because I think the board, I think the board.
Because I still have the outline from where it was put up through, I saved it, and I was told point blank, if you want lights, you pay for them.
I'm sure that, I'm sure that was.
And that was directly from the selecting.
It's a different board of selecting right now, isn't it?
Yeah, but, you know, if you have that outline, if you have that material, why not bring it back in, and we can put that into the mix?
It's a good idea.
But like I said, restricting, we've already restricted people before on how much they can put out in our building, we did it to pull it.
Well, but that doesn't mean that we have to continue to do that forever, you know, we can make things better.
We can change mistakes in the past.
That's what we're trying to do here, we're trying to change mistakes and plan to make fewer of them in the future.
Any further discussion on signs, signs is a pretty good one, okay? So let's move on then to establishing routine hours for planning board meetings, that's item four.
I have a suggestion.
Yes.
Like on everything else, I have a suggestion. I would suggest that we have our business hours from seven to nine thirty, with discussion by the planning board to stop at nine o'clock, which will give the town planner a half hour to do all of his stuff and make his presentations. And then at nine thirty, we can adjourn, or we can continue on depending on how things go. But I think if we set it so that we have a specific period of time that we're going to do our business, and then we know that at a specific point in time, the town planner gets to do his, at least we're going to have an idea as to when we're going to be finishing up.
I would agree with you, but I'd push the time to now a half hour farther.
So you'd say until time.
Until time block within nine thirty.
I'm fine with it as long as we have a specific time.
But realizing in the pinch, we can suspend those.
Right, I can just remember being at the fire station until 11:30 on Sunday.
But, you know, it got to the point where the last meeting, we meet at seven o'clock, and it was asked for an eight thirty adjournment. I mean, that's ridiculous to come here for an hour and a half.
What time did we leave?
It was a little after nine.
We adjourned at nine fifteen. We adjourned at nine fifteen.
Okay.
And if we do ten o'clock, I have no problem with ten o'clock, I just, which, I just think that then we talk from seven to nine thirty on board business, and then give the town planner a half hour to make whatever presentations he has to make.
Well, in terms of setting that kind of criteria, I think that's up to the chair to regulate, you know, when the board business ends and the planner does his thing.
But if we're going to, if we're going to set a time for ten o'clock, then at ten o'clock, we need to quit and go home.
Right.
And if, and if, if the town planner doesn't get to make his report, then he doesn't get to make his report, we stop and go home.
Right, but that's part of the chairman's duty.
I would suggest that this is also another subject that we should.
Should do with the entire board.
Yeah, with the entire board, the vote.
Marty, you have any suggestions on time?
I think nine o'clock, possibly nine thirty, because I've spent too many nights here over the years, to turn out, pushing it out and out and out. And then the other thing you have to think of also too, our planner here, okay, when he gets done here, okay, he still has to drive back to his distance.
I appreciate that, I really do appreciate that concern, Marty, but your first concern should be your business here, don't worry about me.
But, but the fact is, how many times over the years since you've been here, has it dragged on beyond where it should be?
Well, we don't have anywhere it should be at this point.
I.
Go ahead, Derek.
Yeah, I just lost my train of thought. But, no, it's not your fault, this is mine, I'm a little tired these days. But I'm just thinking that right now, we might be just a tad bit grumbly about the number of hours we're putting in, because we have this extra meeting every month. When these extra meetings go away, then we're going to be back to a regular schedule, and we're going to be doing the business, you know, the business of, you know, what's brought before us, and I think it's pretty hard to put a hard and fast times on those, because I don't think it would be fair to an applicant standing before us at nine o'clock at night, and say, sorry, we got to end the discussion, it's planner's report time.
Well, the RSU.
So we, I think we do have to, you know, we do have to take into consideration that we are a little bit tired from these extra meetings and running, but, you know, they're not going to last forever.
Marty mentioned a good point, which is the RSU, because this is their building, how long will they let us have it?
I think we will.
Will it, until whatever time we finish up? That old fellow looks like he's tired.
So, yeah, I'm here till eleven, I don't have a lot.
Oh, okay, and that, you know, that would be part of the consideration we'd have to make.
The RSU generally, I reserve the room till ten o'clock.
Okay.
But, and I think we have to be reasonable about that, again, because of the staff, consideration of their staff. And we have a relationship that we've been building with the RSU, we don't want to damage. There may be times we might go over, but in general, I, we can't go much past ten thirty, we've got to give this gentleman a chance to.
Yeah, because I get to set this up this week.
He's got to set it for the library, you've got to be fair. So we do have limitations, when the economy ever comes back, and we start getting under pressure, I mean, we've had quite a spell here in which we haven't had any applications at all, which is frightening. But when it does resume, and it looks like things are starting to loosen up a little bit in a few places, we're going to have more and more meetings, we're all going to be pushed on our timelines, and we all just have to be more efficient with it, and they have to regulate how much time to spend on each application. And then, again, as you say, that's the job of the chair, with the assistants in the board saying, we've got six items on this agenda, and here it is, nine thirty, we've got two more to go, I say we suspend discussion on this until, table this item until next time.
And there's no, if we do set a time, there's no reason that the board can't vote to extend that time if necessary. So I think we have, we have two proposals at the moment, and I guess we'll probably leave that for more of the full board to decide, but proposal is either nine or ten o'clock as the target times to wind up meetings.
Nine thirty or ten?
Nine thirty or ten?
Yeah, well, I had said nine thirty.
Okay, Marty was saying nine, nine thirty.
Oh, okay.
We'll bring that back again for next time. At this point, planner's report?
Ah, yes, Mr. Chairman, I, I think I reported last time on the two new applications that we had approved. I have applications coming before the staff review committee for Branch Brook Fuels. They're going to be putting in a 30,000 gallon propane tank that's going to be at staff level review, because of the size, whether or not.
30,000?
30,000 gallons.
No, that's, we're worried about thousands square foot of our retail, somebody else, and 30,000 is.
Yeah, but they're the.
They're very different.
They're the business now. I've already taken the fire chief down there, by the way, we've got that, we also have a large forest harvesting that's going to be going on, on and off of Lennec Road, that may run into planning board review, because it may exceed 40%. So I've had Forster from Scallyegan in, we sat down, we talked, so that, he just submitted that, so I'm going to take a closer look at that. We also have another staff review, small three lot subdivision, it's actually not a three lot subdivision, because it's actually a re, it's a reconfiguration, it's rather clever, it's taking a problem lot, it's a floating lot, and it's now going to be on the cul-de-sac, so a lot more floating lots out in the landscape in this particular project, and it will result in the creation of, there's one existing house, and it'll create two more houses. Again, that's a private way, that's going to be staff level review, because it involves transfer of land from one parcel to the other, and back and forth, and so forth, it's not really a subdivision. Actually, it creates two lot, it. Actually, it creates two lot, it reconfigures two lots by transfers of land and then that lot is, is divided. So it's not actually a subdivision. So it's not going to be coming to you. So you've got a staff level. Let's see. Couple of the enforcement actions I'm sure you wanted to ask about. Right now, I had the, the fence, sorry that, that Bob isn't here to, to discuss that. I think we talked last, in October about the, the fence over at the Bentless Camper. And that fence is partially up. The, the tall portion of it, the twelve foot section of it is actually up. However, there's another section that we had agreed in the field was, could be much lower, six to eight feet. That has not been installed and the applicant had asked if they could, in an approval, with the Board pending their, pending their installation. And I reminded the applicant that, what the Board told me in June, which was, once the fence is up, we will resume consideration of the, the application. But until that fence is, until, until the CEO, not, not the fence, until the CEO says that the two thousand and six approval, they are in compliance with the conditions of that two thousand and six approval, that we will then resume the final consideration for fifty unit expansion. But to date, we still don't have that. And what I conveyed to the applicants, I said was what the Board told me in June. I assumed I'm, I'm right in that-
Ground ain't frozen.
And the ground is not frozen yet.
We just, we just passed it tonight. What was it? Seven D?
Yeah, if you have a violation and you have a metric conditions approval, you can't get approval, expansion approval. So I've informed them, I've, I've reminded them again of that, that the need to get that done. In regards to the compost operation that I know that you've, you've received, we kept aware about the CEO on that. That, the, the deadline is the Saturday and they have requested some relief from the, from the Town Manager. The Town Manager is preparing to respond to that, that question. If we don't have a reasonable solution on that, then we're just going to give it to the Town Attorney. And we're going to go from there. The applicant, the applicants, I should say, the, the permit holders have the option, of course, of going to, going to ZBA and appealing the decision on the CEO or coming to the Board and asking for revision to the conditions of their permit or their consideration as, as a use and appealing the planning board's decision. But they're choosing at this point not to do that, to my knowledge.
Given, given the letter that they wrote in response, I don't think we'll see them.
Things could change.
Things could change. Right now, they're, they're going to be, they're going to be having a meeting with the Town Manager. They've requested the Town Manager to interview, so we'll see what that goes from there. But right now, to, to date, to report to the Board, to date, they're not in compliance with the conditions of their two thousand and eleven approval, which is to enable co-enforcement officer and myself to, and the premises to, to inspect the property, make sure that they're in compliance with the conditions. Especially to look at the pads and see if the pads still in the condition and things are where they should be and have done that. Marty, I received those waiting for the year two thousand and eleven. Two thousand and twelve is not due until March, but I have received the two thousand and eleven report on their product. So still remain in violation of their conditions of approval.
And have you got a progress on Kate's Butter?
Kate's Butter was the third thing I wanted to report to you on. Kate's Butter, I believe, my understanding is that there's a new contractor and that the roof is going to be dismantled and replaced.
And they're still thinking to be able to do that before show fires? Before a lot of stuff?
I would say that that's, that line they're not going to make. I believe-
Since it's already flung, yeah.
It's already flung. It's my understanding, I have not talked to Chris, this is mainly through Jim and I'm giving you secondhand information that I get from Jim because the conversations now are between the CEO and, and the patrons on this. But it is my understanding that they are sitting bits and pricing out these to take the whole roof off and work through and are doing it. Because they, they need to get the building.
Right.
I mean, naturally, I want to see what we can get into that building, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Appreciate the statements, Marty.
It's, it's, it's really tragic, but.
Is there, if I may ask along that lines, has there been any update with a problem of certification or is that out the window?
I would say at this point that that certification is not going to be forthcoming.
Because they have to redo the roof.
That's why, that's why the roof-
For the roof, nobody's going to certify that, we're at this point.
No, I don't believe so. Let's put it this way, the, the, the firm that normally certifies that product came in frankly during the summer. Took, took a walk in, said that it doesn't have a stamp on it. No, we have nothing, we have nothing to do with this. I'm sorry, we're leaving. That's essentially what they said. Those are control and they, they, they made it very clear at the beginning that they, that if they are not certified in their product, then there's nothing that's going to make them certify that product because they have no idea how it was manufactured. So barring a UL seal, and you probably know how much-
I have no idea.
Is involved in UL, millions of dollars, probably hundreds of thousands in this case.
What is it?
Underwriter lavatories. That, that stamp you see, the little tag that's on there, extension cords and shit. So at this particular time, I believe the original architect and the original engineer are back on board and solutions are being worked on right now. And as our fervent hope that the roof will, the roof will be difficult to take off. I remember this thing's been, it's been braced. It has grease, ice and water show over the whole thing. And it's gone through the summer with that grease. Having a good opportunity to fake glue. Oh, it's, it's, it's huge to, to notice.
Plus that, that material is all glued in place and that, right?
Well, no, it's bolted. The, the panels are bolted in place. Finding the bolts under the, under, first they got to take the shingles off, then you're going to deal with the grease. And hopefully, hopefully the bitch of things has, has molded enough in the heat of the summer so you can pick out where the bolts are. There might be little rises there, we might be able to find it. Otherwise, can you imagine trying to find all those, those fastener connections?
Are those all zip screw type fasteners or are those not in bolts?
I think bolts.
Okay, then not in bolt, then you can go from the inside, take the nut off.
I'm not sure that's-
That's why I was asking you the question.
You know, Marty, actually thank you for saying that because I'm not sure. I'm not sure about the fasteners. I thought I saw bolts in there, but they might be, they might be, they might be zip screws.
We know zip screws.
No, they had to be drilled, I'll tell you that because you're not, you're not, you're not going to tap into that now.
It's going to be a job.
It's going to be a big job, so.
Okay, well, anything else?
Um, let's see, the, yes, I do have a report. I did meet with the Economic Development Committee and gave them the good news that you folks wanted to put together a, a design charrette. I believe is the term that's been overused. A, a workshop with the neighborhood to get their idea on, and they, I, I believe the EDC had a little bit of difficulty grasping that how productive that would be. And they were, they were unsure that that would be, to have a design workshop would have worked. Several members are very, very familiar with the, with the neighborhood and most, many of the residents, which is why, you know, they have been targeted to, to facilitate this. Some have already gone up the street and talked to everybody. They said, well, everybody says whatever you want to do. So I'm good with that. I'm not feeling comfortable taking that to the, to the Town Meeting. So I think we're going to, I'm, I'm going to just have one. I think we'll have one and they'll have the EDC host it and.
Someone shows up, okay.
Good proof of that is these meetings here are the liveliest discussions we have are-
Each one ourselves.
Are, you know, brought in by pamlamas, you know?
Yeah.
Or three of ourselves.
Well, that occurs, but when we have input, I mean, you know, we, we get some good ideas.
We would never thought of that had the public not brought that in.
Exactly. And I think that's, that's, the EDC is not used to this, this kind of, of work that we do. They're used to interacting with the public, but they're not used to working in this kind of venue where you're seeking suggestions from people or soliciting ideas from them on how the property should be developed or what kind of, what kind of visioning they want to see for the future in their neighborhood. And I think that we'll just have to do a joint meeting, but I think I'm going to have to take some, some of the lead on this. I know Jen Burles will provide food, they'll bring and pack the house because her stuff is so good over at Winks. But I'm going to take, I, I think we'll, we'll proceed with that. On another note, the thing that was very interesting about the EDC, the EDC baked the question, it was an intriguing one, which I was, caught me off guard and I was not prepared to answer. They said, why are you limiting this district, this townhouse corner district? Why are you limiting to, I think it was about a thousand feet up Log Cabin Road? They said, why don't you go all the way up to Route One? And yeah, I, I throw, my riles originally said, wow. Talk about, you know, talk about something. If you can sell that, fine, but yeah, talk about departing with the comp plan.
I, I think it's, we're pushing the limit of it right now. We're doing so long to encompass a couple of areas, but it would be- Outside the comp plan. Yeah, it would be.
Yeah, we're, we're taking our four district and we're turning it into a mixed use. We're turning it into sort of a B, a DB one district. That's really what we're looking at doing, assuming, not, not that intense, but DB, DB one district down in, you know, was now our four district. And, and if you look at what's across the street, I mean, I erroneously had said that was the free enterprise and is not in Kennebunkport. It's the farm and, it's the farm district, farming district, which is very low density, low intensity activities. So RH Brown, right there is actually the, the non-conforming, usable, non-conforming.
But question for you on that one. When RH Brown first started, that fell into that category because-
Sure did.
Because, just because that may be not today's standards, but they've been there for so long, it did, again, it's like having neighbors move around to next to the farm.
Yeah, and there's no question about that, but Kennebunkport didn't want to see a proliferation of that in that district, so they just shut it down and made it a low density district. And consequently, that's why they're operating there alone. Same thing with the Berry Farm and a few other businesses. So we're going to be, I'm, I'm going to want to talk to Warner and I think I'm going to invite Kennebunkport. When we start talking about that house district, I think we need to see if we can powwow with Kennebunkport. I certainly don't want to just go blaze ahead and do, and pay no attention to what's occurring ten feet away on the other side of the boundary.
You know, I talked to Dick and Amy.
In terms of going all the way up to Route One, I think that's, again, where we really need to get some public input. If everybody along that stretch says, hey, yeah, go for it, then that's something we ought to consider. But if we have, you know, people down at the bottom saying, that's a great idea, then if you get up a little bit saying, no, we're behind the way it is.
Thank you, we like our rural area here.
We need that public input.
Yeah, we do.
But now, are they talking just up Log Cabin Road or are they looking at affecting Senate Road and Arundel Road as well?
Arundel Road is part of it, yeah, Arundel Road is part of the district, not just Log Cabin Road.
Okay, so it's going to come down Arundel and up Log Cabin?
Correct.
It won't impact Senate Road at all?
They looked at Senate Road and I pulled out the aerials and I pulled out the, the zoning map and the aerials tell a, a big truth there. This is a residential district and it really is not work, it's not going to work on Senate Road. There's justification for it more on Log Cabin Road because you've got, you've got these sprinkles of non-residential activities going there. You've got, you've got the campground. You've got, um-
Where?
Oh, that's Senate, that's Senate Road.
That's Senate Road.
Yeah, that's right, never mind. But you've got the old forefathers. Well, forefathers make sense and that's that area down in there, but when you get farther up, you've got the furniture place and-
No, but that's up next to the farm.
Way up. Yeah, well, that's why I was saying, let's go all the way up there. Let's go to him and pass.
But the furniture place is on River Road.
No, it's not.
It's on Log Cabin.
I got to figure, I don't know where the one on Log Cabin is.
It's Houston and Company.
It's Houston and Company.
Let's, let's-
Okay, I'm in the wrong neighborhood.
Right next to the, right next to the farm.
You also have Richard Lovejoy's, got his business up there.
Which used to be old Charlie Worth.
Right, and there's, there's a boat building place, I'm not sure.
Where?
They tell me, they know it, I don't.
Wait, 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 that's, that is-
That's, that's closer down.
Oh, I know where that one is, yeah, okay.
And, and there are a number of, of smaller little places like that. The problem is that there's not a real density there of that. But I mean, if we want to explore that, that's a major departure from our comp plan.
Oh, yeah.
Huge departure.
When you spoke with Economic Development, did you talk about that gateway that we were discussing?
I did discuss the gateway and they were intrigued by that, but they weren't familiar with it. They really, they, they, they're going to go out and take a look and really take a look at that. And, but nobody really jumped on it. They, like many people, thought Arundel ended on, on the south side of the bridge.
Yeah.
And I'm sure the folks in Proctor Road would love to hear that, you know? But that's the general impression and then which is why that district may be essential or- if not that district, certainly an effort by the town through any number of avenues to dress that up and make a real interest statement is really kind of important. If you think about it, I mean, if we're going to push the BI district too, that's a gateway to the BI district. As well as, quite frankly, Old Post Road, you know, being a shortcut down to Log Cabin Road area. So it's a, I don't know if a lot of people use it.
Too windy.
It is too windy. So, but they're, they're going to be investigating that because they weren't too windy.
And they're, they're also thinking about what our character is actually.
No, we're just too windy for our-.
And I should, I should tell you this also. I have had, I mean, their big question still is, okay, what, what about the study? And the RFP has gone out, has gone out on that study. It's been advertised in the American Planning Association website, so it's got national recognition. I've gone through every list I can of market analysis and branding companies, of which, believe it or not, there's not that many. I've sent personal invitations by email to about thirty to forty different companies. A number of them were reported back that, thank you very much. Sort of like talking to Seagrave, you know? I'll thank you, but you know, frankly speaking, you're not in a league we're used to, you know? And I did have an hour long discussion with some folks from Nashville who were wonderful and really excited, but said that, that our price point was just not there. However, I have talked to several others who said, we can work on that. You're not going to get brochures and all this other stuff. And I said, we didn't want brochures. We want ideas. We want the market data and we want ideas. And maybe some training on, on how to proceed. And they said, yeah, we can, we can do that. So I think we're going to get, we'll get some proposals. I haven't heard from planning decisions. Maybe they were traumatized by RSU, but I'm surprised they haven't teamed up with any, I haven't heard from them yet. So in any case, that's out there. So the question of trying to define who we are and where we're going, they're not going to do that. They're going to give us ideas. We're going to help ultimately define who we are and where we're going. They're going to give us ideas of what our strengths are and take an outsider's look at it and what the market opportunities that they see emerging in this rather tumultuous economic climate we're in might be. So when that gets started, I, I have a closing date of December fourth on that and then we'll start doing interviews.
Oh, we'll decide until after December thirty first. Let's fall off the fiscal cliff.
It's going to like a true accountant.
I've got my parachute.
It's going to make all the difference in the world.
It is going to make all the difference in the world, there's no question about it.
Okay, anything else?
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Any Board members?
Move to adjourn?
Second. Second. Second, all in favor?
Yeah.
Go turn that off.
When's our next meeting?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I should have, well, I guess we'll have to do that. We'll have to discuss that in office.
Turn off all the recording.